This is the town of East Fishkill Planning Board. And I have a roll call of town planning board members.
Laurie G.
John Eichman.
Jason Pereskeba.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Christopher Tamiolos.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome everyone. Let those just arrived and get seated. There is an overflow area because we want to make sure we keep appropriate distance inside the main room. There are three spots up front. Michelle.
There's a couple more.
Michelle, where is, is Jackie?
Jackie's doing crowd control up there.
Can she, can she hear, can they hear out?
I'm going to go ask her.
Okay. While Michelle is doing that, we have two upcoming meetings, one on September 30th, the next one on October 20th. We have two, we have one set of meeting minutes to approve tonight. This is the one from June 24th. So I'm going to ask for, we're going to hold those minutes for this meeting and approve them at the next meeting.
They just give her two minutes because there's a little, there's a small line waiting to come in and then she's ready to.
Okay. And can they hear?
She'll be sitting there and everyone else is in this room so they can kind of hear.
There's no speakers going out there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, our last planning board meeting, member John Cutler has joined us. So we're going to get started. First, we're going to make a motion to our intent to be lead agency for Forest Stone Ridge Commons. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I should declare lead agency.
Declare lead agency for Stone Ridge Commons.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm going to ask the main speaker for Stone Ridge Commons to come up and give an overview of the project to, for those present.
Hi, Amy Bombergery with Day and Stokosa. Stone Ridge Commons is located in the V1A zoning district. That district allows for a four-story building and a 50% lot coverage. We're proposing two, three-story buildings on two separate lots, which will be later combined, and less than 35% lot coverage on each of the parcels. It's a specially permitted use and it complies with all zoning requirements. There's 51 proposed units, 27 one-bedroom in building one and 24 two-bedroom in building two. There's 89 parking spaces required. We're proposing 100.
Amy, I'm just going to have you pause for a second. I just want to open up officially open.
I'm sorry.
Board members, can I have a motion to open for public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proceeding.
Site access is obtained from Route 52. There's a left turn out restriction from the parcel. Palin Road has a left turn in restriction. We have DOT approval. We obtained that on June 17th and Dutchess County DPW approval obtained on December 27th. The estimated total residency of the units is 100. Of those residents, it's assumed that there will be eight to 13 school age children and two to four of those children will attend private schools. Wappingshire enrollment projections have shown a steady decline since 2011 through 2017. That's from their study. That's on their website. They project a continuous decline through 2027. We are providing pedestrian access to the bus stop on Round Hill Road. Round Hill Road will remain gated, so there won't be any vehicular access through there. The drainage is 100% infiltration, so there's no runoff off-site. The utilities, the sewer and water are going to be municipal. We received fire advisory board approval on March 4th and architectural review board approval on February 26th.
That, your opening statement. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I'll, a couple of things we want to kind of go through tonight and hopefully that has been, that's a brief summary of what has, of this particular project and hopefully you've had opportunity to view the rendering that they have for it as it would appear. So we want to give the public opportunity to express any concerns, their thoughts. Ask you to be thoughtful, respectful, you know, those of the project. We just want the, what your feeling is on this project. And so when you come up to the dais, make sure that you give your name, your name and address and sign the, and give that information on the podium. So for those that want to come forward.
Hello, my name is Bob Falcone. I live on McEwen Terrace. And that's one of the houses that got flooded the last time they built houses where you guys plan on putting this apartment thing. Now drainage, you said you're talking about drainage. Where's the water going to go? All them trees that you're going to cut down and all that mountain that holds the water, that lets the water flow naturally into the ground, isn't going to be there anymore. Now, I'm not a tree person, but I assume, Doug, how many gallons of water? Hundreds of gallons, hundreds of gallons a day each tree sucks up from the ground. Where's this water going to go? You don't care about the little guy that's behind the development? And there's about 50 or 60 houses back there that flood every eight to 10 years. And we complain. Nothing gets done. The last time, they made it easier for the water to go under the road instead of over the road. Didn't stop nothing, didn't help anything. I mean, has anyone done an environmental study on this? Where's the grain matter going? Where? You've got septic fields, you've got leach field. What are you going to do? That's the main concern. And me, I'm not a, I don't have an expensive house, but some people invested $600,000, $700,000 in this area. And when they see this next to their house, what's going to happen to the value of their houses? And go down Palin Road at 6 o'clock in the morning to go get bagels or whatever you want to do, there's a lot of cars traveling down Palin Road. There's all big traffic. This is going to cause big problems. And when the school is open, you've got to see how many cars, practically every kid drives to school or his parent drives him to school. Nobody takes buses. Okay? Did anyone do an environmental study in this space?
Yes, it, just, so just got your, two questions. Any other questions you want to bring up?
Well.
Because I'm going to have her speak after you.
Okay. I just want to know where you have plans for all this water that when the storms hit, where's it going to go? Catch basin? Didn't work last time. And I doubt it's going to work this time. So, that's my little gripe. Thank you.
All right, Amy, I have you come back up. If you could address his concern along with speak of traffic and I believe Brendan here is here as well can further talk about traffic and how it's been studied.
So first, the, there is no leach fields. It's going to be municipal sewer. We're going to tie in underneath Route 52 to the facilities that are on the Global Foundry site. Water is going to be serviced by municipal water as well. Drainage, it's infiltrating. The soil is very good there and it's, the clearing is not, it's not old growth trees. It's mostly, it was cleared some years ago, so it's mostly just brush. The traffic, we have our traffic consultant here, Mark from JMC, so I'll let him speak to that. But we are only projecting 100 residents total. That's based, that's based on two studies, the Rutgers study, the Rutgers demographic study and the ESI demographic study. Rutgers looks at past residencies from the census of 2000 and then ESI looks at surveys of people who move households. So that data is more recent, but they're both about the same. They both come up with, Rutgers comes up with 100 total residents and ESI comes up with 104 total residents. And that's all ages. So of those residents, a portion of them are school age children and won't drive. And some of them are retired and so the traffic impacts are not substantial. Neither is the burden on the school.
If I, please, please don't do that in the, just, I want to make sure we can hear what she's saying. You know, just, and just be respectful. I'm going to ask Brendan if you can comment on the traffic. And I know you've studied it both.
I think beneficial to maybe first, but more just give an overview of the traffic impact study I think they complete for the project. You said Mark was here?
Yes, he is.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, I think maybe a few comments about the process for the audience, for the residents.
Sure.
Just so everyone's aware, the process is, is that the developer had filed an application to develop the property. They then submit various studies, the water, the traffic, water and sewer issues, et cetera. They submitted to the town. The town has retained outside consultants. Brendan is from HV Engineering on traffic and Peter Sotero is from CPL Engineering. They review that. There's been back and forth on that. The plans are then brought to the planning board. They're all available, the plans for the public to review at the town hall. And then this evening, the public comments come in and then the planning board considers those and the other comments and reports have come in from the other consultants. So just, I thought that might be good just for the, everyone to understand what has occurred to this point. And then as many of your questions will attempt to be answered to this evening and further comments would still be obtained.
Good evening. My name is Mark Patrow from JMC. We are the traffic engineers that prepared the traffic study for the applicant for this development. We did prepare a traffic study. We've actually been on this project since 2006. This property was previously approved for 3,025 square foot bank as well in combination with the 20,600 square foot medical office building. So I do want to put that in perspective. That was previously what was approved on this development site. And what's being currently proposed is 51 units of multifamily housing. So when you look at the comparison of those previously approved driveway volumes to what is now currently being proposed, during the peak weekday AM hour, there is a reduction in 68 trips or vehicles compared to what was, is proposed, what was previously approved. And during a weekday afternoon hour, it's a reduction of 111 trips or vehicles on the roadway from currently proposed to what was previously approved. The traffic study did consider the school traffic and it was looked at and observed. And the previously approved project was approved twice before by the DOT and has been approved again recently for a third time for the traffic and all the driveway accesses. So this has been reviewed multiple times by many agencies as well as the Department, the Dutchess County Department of Public Works for Palin Road as well. So it was considered, those aspects of the project. That's all I have for now. I know you have many other people might want to speak.
I think more, just a couple of things to point out and you can correct me or clarify things. On Route 52 into the site, there's going to be an exclusive left turn lane installed. It's not going to widen the road. It's just, there's a median there now that's hatched off. They're going to re-strike that to make a left turn lane into their, into their site. I think you guys have also committed to lengthening the left turn lane that currently feeds John Jay High School, which is, you know, gets overrun in the morning hours the most. They're going to look to extend that left turn lane up to the point of where the left turn lane is going to be installed to the project site.
Yep. Brendan, you are correct. We are going to be installing a left turn lane on 52 heading eastbound so you can turn left into the property. And then we would lengthen the existing high school driveway left turn lane. As an additional point I forgot to mention, the DOT is aware of the current conditions at the school intersection and observes that it's an existing condition and they will be implementing traffic timing improvements at that intersection with coordination with the high school. So that's going to go concurrently opposite or with or without the project. The DOT is going to do that. So it's not going to hold us up as far as getting and doing the improvements within the right of way, but the DOT will be doing that. That's actually mentioned in their emails that we've included in correspondence to the town.
And I know Amy did mention it in the opening statement, but I just want to, again, maybe head off some questions with regard to how the site is being accessed and how the exits are set up. So there's going to be a left turn allowed off, the DOT is going to, but they have conceptually approved a left turn off of 52 into the site. That entrance then will also accommodate right turns in and right turns out off of 52. There will not be left turns permitted to come out of that driveway onto 52. You're going to, if you need to head westbound 52, you're going to have to exit on the Palin Road driveway access and then take a left at the light. Also, on Palin Road, there is going to be a restriction where there's going to be no left turns allowed into that driveway. Just because the proximity of the driveway to the intersection and the number of lanes there, during the course of all reviews, that was deemed not to be a movement that was appropriate. So there'll be no left turn allowed off of Palin into the site. And there you're allowed to make a left turn, sorry, you're allowed to make a left turn out, not a left turn in, then you can make rights in and rights out.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
So if somebody wants to go from hope to hope well from this, from this place, how are they going to do that? They're going to have to make a left on the 52, go up to the light and then make a left on Palin?
No, they're going to exit onto Palin Road and make a left. I think I misspoke there.
Make a left.
I thought I saw a study that said that there's no left turn on the Palin Road exit.
Right, correct. There's four lanes of traffic across.
Right, there's, you can exit, the county is permitting a left turn out, but not a left turn.
Correct.
That's different.
How's that control line trying to play?
It's, it's stop controlled. It's a stop control intersection. So there's a stop sign and there'll be restrictions. The typical no left turn signage you place on the right-hand side of the roadway and the opposing left-hand side of the roadway.
So there's no turn?
No left turn.
But that's doing work in the service because of the gas station, these people through some gas, having to navigate.
Sir, 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 can I just ask you, you'll get opportunity to come up and make the, yeah, thank you.
I will just also point out on the site plan, there is curbing that's shown to restrict also the left turns prohibitions at both driveways. So entering in, on Palin Road, there's an island channelized, so you can only make rights in as well as the signage. As well as, if you're coming out onto 52, there's also a right channelized island to force you to go right as well, as well as the prohibition signage as well. So it's further enforcing the prohibitions that are being proposed.
Can you tell me how many cars at peak weekday hours in the AM that you think is going to be leaving the site?
So total, entering and leaving in the AM is 18. That is one trip, one trip every 3.3 minutes during the peak hour. And then in the afternoon, it's 23. So that's one trip every 2.6 minutes during the peak hour.
What is your peak hour? Sorry, what is your peak hour?
The peak hour is seven to eight in the AM and four to five in the PM.
Well, hang on, hang on. I just, again, audience, I'm just requesting you to be, let's make sure we, you know, respectful of the speaker and let him get the information across. So you can come up with questions that you think that, that count that and then it'll get addressed.
So is that realistic?
Yes.
How many adults total in the complex?
Maybe more, what you could do is you could explain how that's arrived.
So the projections of the traffic is based on a publication the Institute of Transportation Engineers produces. It's based on numerous studies of those specific land uses. They have ones for every different land use that is proposed or, you know, anything from pharmacy would drive through to residential. So they actually have, well, will do studies and will submit them to them at these existing facilities. So they're actually based on existing locations and those type of land uses. So that's how those projections are calculated. And that's a standard publication that's used throughout the field and something that's followed regularly by New York State Department of Transportation.
So what happens if it doesn't follow the formula and it's 50 cars leaving in the morning?
Well, that's, that's considered, that's considered in the formula. So there are, there are studies that, you know, they look at the highs and lows of certain ones, but based on the projections and the, where this lands as far as number of units, that's what it's stating. But as far as a higher volume, that is not something that's anticipated. Right now, this is a low generation.
If it does, can the intersection handle it?
Absolutely. There's, there is, not going to be a significant impact related to this project at this stated intersection based on the study as.
So can you, can you quantify when you say not a significant impact? So you're saying 18 trips in the morning? Let's say it's 50 trips in the morning. What are, what's the average number of cars going through that intersection right now in the peak hour? Do you have that?
I don't have it handy. It's in the study. There's figures that have the actual intersection volumes.
Hundreds, thousands?
There's probably, I don't, I don't, I can't tell you exactly. I would throw a number out and not positive, but I don't.
It's hundreds. I mean, it'd fall short of thousands, but it's certainly hundreds of cars at the Palin Road intersection. You know, in the peak hours for certain.
Don't you say that left turns will not be allowed onto 52 or Palin Road?
No, fif, left turns in from 52 are allowed. Left turns out onto 52 are not allowed.
That's like, if you're on, if you're coming out of your development, you cannot make a left on 52?
Not onto 52.
Well, then how are you going to get to Hope?
You, you go up Palin Road.
You can't make a left on Palin.
You make, you can make a left out.
Or you can make a right.
Or you make a right out.
They're saying that you can cross the four lanes.
You can cross the four lanes because that's, that's different from the.
Or you can take a right and then make a left at the light.
Yeah.
And that's a long, long trip. So, so to prevent someone from going, taking a left on the Palin out of that property, what would have to be put in place? Some type of barrier to make sure no one makes a left? Because that's a, you know.
So there is proposed an island that has curbing and the concrete on top of it to prevent people from driving and making that left turn. So it's channelized to force people to go right as well as the recommended signage associated with that prohibition.
Andy, we don't have a copy of the traffic study here to know what the peak hour trips are, do we?
I don't. Do you have a copy of the study?
I don't have a copy of the study with me.
I'm looking through it right now.
I just want to say it's not.
It was, it was, sorry. I'll, I'll answer to you since I'm hearing behind you. But the counts that were conducted for the traffic study, they were conducted in January of 2020 while school was in session. So these volumes that are in the traffic study are existing volumes and they're pre to the pandemic.
Based on the pre-pandemic January of this year?
Yes, correct.
And specific to John Jay High School and that whole intersection?
It includes John Jay High School intersection, includes the site driveway on 52, includes the intersection with Palin Road on 52, as well as the Palin Road site driveway. Those are the intersections that were studied.
All right, so if you can step down, I think that answered some questions. Feel free to come on. Make sure you put your.
At Slow Shower, town of East Fishkill, for disclaimer purposes, just to let everybody know, I'm currently a school board trustee for the Wappingshire Central School District. I am not here representing any member of the board or the administration. I'm here as a citizen of the town to express some concerns. I apologize if I'll be a little repetitive. Some questions and answers were already given, but I just want to get some clarity on a few things and bring up some other points. One concerning point is, is that the school district has never had a conversation with the developer. I think that's an important part of the process. I understand we do have things updated on the website with regards to enrollment and other pertinent information, but no one at the district in the senior administration or facilities or transportation has spoken to anybody in regards to this project other than receiving lead agency notification. And, you know, the role of the, of the district is not anything pertinent. It's just as an, as an interested age, part of interested agency as we all know. I know we had brought up potential students, eight to 13, which could always be 16 to 26, could be 20 to 35, we don't know. Those students would attend Brinkerhoff. Those classrooms are pretty much at capacity to the point of where redistricting had taken place several years ago at a comfort level. Some cohorts are slightly higher. But if students do move in, potential students do move into this complex, they may or may not be attending Brinkerhoff. They may be going to Myers Corners depending on what the capacity is for the specific classrooms. I think that's important information for the developer to know if they're looking to sell units and people are coming to think that, oh, I'm going to be a half a mile, a mile down the road to Brinkerhoff, when in actuality my kid may be sitting on a bus for 30 to 40 minutes and going to school in Wapping, over in Wappingshire where Myers Corners. So I think that's something that should be looked at and spoken to with, with the district. I know we've talked about transportation and based on the study. Look, we all know January, you don't have as many kids driving because parents don't give their kids the keys to the car during the winter time. And even if there's one kid on a bus, there's a bus. So I don't know in the particular study that was done, if they actually counted how many buses do come into John Jay in the morning. And anyone that's been here who's driven their kid or has tried to get out to go to work, because the emergency exit DOT closed, which was a separate entrance across from the gas station that was utilized for students to pull in, is no longer available. And that started at the beginning of this particular school year. For safety reasons, it was being used as an entrance. It's really for emergency purposes only. And once renovations were done in the parking lot, DOT closed that particular entrance. So if you're here in the morning at 7:15 to get to your 7:30, 7:35 class between the buses, your cars are backed up Palin Road, on Palin Road, past Palin Road, past Cronin Farms, all the way down. And again, I don't know how much was taken into consideration, the development of IPark. Obviously, they're looking to generate more businesses to move in and people will be coming to. Obviously, they're looking to generate more businesses to move in and people will be coming to work. That's a process moving forward. I don't know if any information has been discussed with the owners of I Park and what the potential traffic will be then. Granted, I didn't live here twenty, twenty-five years ago when the capacity of, uh, the campus was a lot larger with IBM, but the other entrances and exits were open on Lime Kill and so forth. So I know we had ten, fifteen thousand, seventeen thousand, twenty thousand people working here back then. Times have changed, but those exits are all closed and everything is on, uh, you know, is on, is on fifty-two. Just with regards to Brinkhoff, obviously, the potential, uh, enrollment for students is kind of low. But again, a conversation with the district, I think, is important because potentially moving forward, there are other projects that are before you that will affect the school district, which in turn will affect the capacity of the classrooms. There are Stormville projects which you have in front of you. Obviously, the project, uh, the fifty-five and over on the other side of Palin is not going to really affect the school. There may be more of a traffic impact, okay, on that side of Palin, to this side of Palin, to get to school and so forth. I don't know if that's been taken into consideration, other projects nearby. Only that one, not really the one in Stormville. It doesn't really affect, uh, the potential area here. But from a school perspective, it does because Gayhead is crammed and those kids would have to be pushed over. And they may be pushed down to Brinkhoff, which means these particular students who may be at Brinkhoff may end up being redistricted, as I said before, over to Myers because that's the only school where there's actually six empty classrooms that would take an overflow. So again, I'm just trying to give a whole perspective just from the, from the school standpoint. I find it interesting, and I guess I'll say thankful to a degree regarding the traffic light in front of the school, that there's going to be some discussion or, as the gentleman mentioned, uh, the timing of that particular light. Because the school district has gone to DOT that I'm aware of at least a half a dozen times, especially since that exit was closed, for them to do something with that particular light and we would turn down every single time. So if you're able to get that done, that, that, that's a good part of what's going on. Because that's a significant issue, uh, with the timing on that light. For whatever reason, they've turned down the request to come in and try to mitigate that particular problem. I know that the concept of the project really is to attract young, working-class individuals where we don't have large families. I don't know if the concept is to somehow tie into I Park to keep people living here and not moving away, not traveling to the city for jobs, maybe working across the street with what's planned with I Park, which I think is great. But not to beat a dead horse, it just, it bothers me that we're a community. We need to have all aspects, all stakeholders within the community to have conversations on how we're going to potentially develop this town. I believe at the very least, you need to have a conversation with Assistant Superintendent Kristen Crandall, who handles transportation, and have a conversation with her, okay? Because things have changed with exact, with what's going on. Assistant Superintendent Lokima with regards to potential students. I mean, like I said, uh, the district is listed, you know, as an interested party, an interested agency, but to have absolutely no contact, no phone call for a project that's been in development for as long as you say that it is, at least for the last couple of years. I don't know what happened when the project was approved for other particular buildings many years ago. Probably didn't have an impact. Who knows what was going on back then? But moving forward, this project, other project, the school district, at the very least, you need to have a conversation with the, the district leaders. So they understand exactly what the developer, what you guys are looking to do, how it's going to affect the community, how it's going to affect the district, okay? I went a little bit through the site plans. You have turning. We have kids that walk, okay, that live down the block on fifty-two, that walk, you know, in terms of sidewalks and, and other particular things and safety and crossing patterns. The traffic is enormous in the morning. There's a safety issue. We've had issues with kids that pa- park at East Fishkill Soccer Field. They walk over. Thankfully, there's some sidewalks there. Unfortunately, the other project that is a huge eyesore to us right now, that's next to the school, there's no sidewalks ever going to get put in over there unless somebody comes in and takes over that project and does something else. That's an issue too, when you have kids that park and walk. It's increased traffic. All I'm suggesting is please reach out to the school district, have a conversation, explain to them exactly what your numbers are, what you're looking at, what your traffic study looks like. Share that with the district so the district understands what's going on, whether they need to make any adjustments moving forward to accommodate and vice versa. And like I said, not to beat a dead horse, I appreciate that if this project helps make a change to that particular light in front of the school, that would be a huge asset. So I just wanted to give my perspective. Again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the school board or the school district. I'm a resident here. These are just things that jump out at me. You know, if, if we're going to move forward, and again, I don't live in the project, so, you know, I understand other people are going to have issues with water and whatnot. I'm just looking at it from the perspective of an increase for, for school. Because what's going to happen? You're telling me thirteen kids? That's great. Thirteen kids going to Brinkhoff may fit. If that goes to twenty-six or thirty and they're all elementary school kids and a bunch of them just happen to be third or fourth grade, you may or may not have room for them. Then there's the conversation of maybe you need to build, you know, another four to six thousand square feet, four classrooms and common space onto Brinkhoff to accommodate the possible influx of these students. I don't know. I don't have all that information. But again, that's a conversation that should be had with, 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 uh, senior administration. So I'm sorry if I was a little repetitive and, you know, touched on other things other people were talking about, but I just think they're important, important points that we should all consider, um, with this project and any other project. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Amy, I'm going to ask you to first, um, did you reach out to the school district?
We did. We had a conversation with...
Can you share with?
We had a meeting with them in, I believe it was in March, the superintendent, the DOT. And I also spoke to the supervisor of the busing. The current bus stop right now is on the cul-de-sac on Round Hill Road. We're providing pedestrian access through our project to the cul-de-sac. No tr- no, uh, school buses will turn in or out of the proposed development.
Tell me, interrupt you, but do you have a, do you know the exact date in March that you met with the superintendent? Because I have an email from the district office that says there's been absolutely no communication.
Yes, I do have the date. April second.
April second.
It was a WebEx.
And that was with the superintendent?
It was the superintendent, the DOT, the supervisor, the town, the client. So the supervisor also committed to providing a traffic cop in the, in the, uh, parking lot of the school if he has one available during morning and evening.
Well, let's just clarify that. As we do with all the school...
Mr. Carrion, that you have done the meeting with?
Yeah, well, I, can I just straighten out a few things? Number one is with the CEQA process, as I said, every time somebody files an application, there's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And, uh, a complete set of the application is sent to two levels of agencies. Those that have approving authority like DOT, Department of Health, et cetera, and those that are identified by the town as interested parties, i.e. the school district. Reference was made. All projects that come for the town, since CEQA was adopted in nineteen eighty, uh, have been referred to the school district. Uh, a normal part of a process, when an interested party is notified, if they have an interest in the project, they would so notify us and then any requests that they have are accommodated, et cetera. It is not the lead agency's responsibility to go to them. So that's number one. Number two, um, there is no commitment on part of the town with respect to any police officer. The, the only, uh, issue with police, just like we do on three seventy-six, sometimes when the elementary school's coming out in the afternoon, uh, to assist the backlog of buses. If there's an officer available, he or she may pull over in direct traffic. Obviously, if that was something that was, uh, discerned at the high school area, that would be done too. But there's no commitment for that.
Right. And availability was...
It's a general policing issue. Right.
Um, the...
I just want to say, I'm clarifying, I mean, if that happened, I wouldn't try to refuse you then of being derelict in your responsibility. I'm just going off of an email I received and something off clarified. So at this point, please don't think what I said personally. In fact, we did have a Zoom meeting.
Well, well, we don't, we don't have an issue with what you said, but like your reference to the dome project next door, we actually, I participated in a meeting with an assistant superintendent of schools at that time. And we wanted to have a connecting ro- a pathway from the high school to the dome. Of course, the dome could have been used as a sheltering facility for the high school should it have been evacuated for some reason. That superintendent refused it, said no, and it probably got up out of the meeting and left us. Okay, so...
I don't want you to have one. I'm willing to have that one. I just want the audience to, I just want, you know, to apologize if that, in fact, happened. I'm trying to please you, so, but, you know, that's just a question.
We're good, we're good.
Just understand, too, you...
So Amy, the meeting you had, I'm sorry, the meeting you had, was it related to the traffic flow and where buses would stop? Or was it related to the additional kids and the impact of the school district?
It was related to traffic flow because there's been, it's been brought up that there's an issue during, uh, people arriving and leaving school, arriving more so than leaving.
Just want to make sure you understand too, I'll confirm that I was present at that meeting also, uh, representing the town to be honest. On April second, thank you, sir.
Were nothing about the additional kids?
I'm sorry, what?
Were nothing about the additional kids?
It, it wasn't a topic of discussion, however, this project is not projected to create more than thirteen kids and that's spread out over the entire age group. So that's on the high end. And we're only as good as the information we have to work with. I used the two industry standards and I looked at the Wappingshire Central School District information. And everything that Wappingshire produces projects a decline through two thousand and seven. And that is based on historic information up until two thousand and seventeen, I believe.
So, so...
So the superintendent never asked how many kids is going to be coming from the site?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't think he did. Not on that meeting. However...
The superintendent would ask, how many more kids are going to be coming to my school?
The issue was brought up about where the bus would stop to pick up these kids. And if there's an existing stop, so that it wouldn't create any more traffic flow through the site by school buses. We're also providing...
But they weren't told how many there would be because that would be a number that they would want to know for busing?
I don't remember talking about that with him.
So Amy, I'm going to, one of my recommendations is to have that conversation with the school district. So that we're, we're absolutely clear that, hey, we can, it's going to generate X amount on the low end and the high end, so the school district can, uh, can plan accordingly.
Okay. Uh, we're also providing a sidewalk all the way down the length of Route fifty-two for pedestrian access on the site. So I know that was an issue brought up.
Fifty-two and the, the front, your property frontage?
Correct. The entire length of the property frontage along fifty-two.
So it'll be a sidewalk to nowhere?
That's the DOT.
Is there a reason we can't put, have, have, contribute to the sidewalk in the right of way for the high, for the highway itself?
That will then be dedicated to, that will be in the right of way. Is that what you asked? Where we're putting the sidewalk in...
Why we can't get the sidewalk down to where the kids are going to need to cross the street to get to high schools?
Well, then we'd have to have permission from...
That's what she just asked.
Other...
Other property owners.
We don't own the property all the way down.
Right of way, the highway and the Central Hudson, easement, probably, right?
So we don't have, well, we're, we're dedicating property to bring it down the entire length. That will then become the DOT's right of way. I don't know if there's room to put a sidewalk in there right of way going down the length of fifty-two.
If there was, is that doable?
We can consider it.
Explore that option, please.
What was that?
Explore that option, please.
I think based on, uh, just a preliminary look at that, Lori, just so you know, there is, uh, it doesn't appear that there's sufficient right of way, uh, for a sidewalk. There is a shoulder, um, you know, it's not a very wide shoulder, but it's at least a, a few feet wide that does extend, uh, along this area of fifty-two on that, on the north, on the north side. There's also a, a culvert that crosses fifty-two, um, down by the power lines there that, uh, that's pretty close to the edge of the road, this guy rail right there. You know, that would be a significant, uh, measure to widen that out to a sidewalk there.
Brendan, in, in your opinion, what, what needs to occur to be able to have a sidewalk that goes all the way to John Jay?
Yeah, I, I think there would need to be, um, you know, there would need to be some, some right of way obtained to be able to do that.
What about the other side of the road?
Yeah, that's right.
I'm less familiar with the other side of the road.
Explore both sides of the road.
Yeah, the, the, the disadvantage to that would be the crossing because, uh...
They would have to cross either way.
They'd have to cross in a four-way.
There's a signal at the school. Uh, there's a crossing at the school. There's not a, there's not a mid-block crossing, which is not a desirable thing.
There's also a crossing, uh, Palin.
Yeah, there is, right.
Yeah, so...
But even if, I, I think the point from Brendan is like, even if you go on the other side of the road, you still have that constraint right where the clover it is. So if, if we can...
Clovers can be extended.
Yeah, but so might as well extend it on the, on, on the side where the project is going to be.
The other side of the road is not, is not their property. I think we're confused as to why we'd be looking for them to build a sidewalk on it.
I think with all, you know, all the developments that have occurred, you know, unfortunately, the, the dome hasn't been completed, but, you know, orthopedic associates, any of the other developments that have gone front of the board, it's certainly been, you know, one of the requirements is to, uh, get some sidewalk in. So I think it's, uh, you know, they could continue along that path of, uh, you know, putting, putting, putting them in where there's the opportunity to put them in.
So, so... So explore the, explore that, yeah, the option of the sidewalk going from the edge of your property with DOT, Central Hudson, a- and then what's, what's it going to take? I mean, that's the, that would be the comeback.
Yep. Uh, there was also something, I think...
Both sides are good.
Okay. One or the other.
Well, either side.
The, uh, there was a comment about I Park. I think there are Lime Kill entrances open. I know one for sure is open. I know a couple others are gated, so it is accessible. I think I responded to everything there.
I don't think you responded to the...
Did your traffic study include that? I'm sorry, did you include the I Park counts?
Mark, did the traffic study include the I Park counts?
Incorporated, uh, incorporated general to increase in four or five.
Okay, Mark.
A general, an incorporated general.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, like I stated before, the project's been, uh, previously approved and projects that have come after it should have considered the project volumes in their study as well. But the traffic study considers general growth volumes, so the general growth of traffic in the study area. So every, every year was a percentage increase that we projected for the design year of the project that incorporates growth of traffic in the area. However, traffic based on DOT's counts, um, shows that there's a decrease in traffic along Route fifty-two, um, over several years. So the way we did the analysis was a conservative approach as far as including a, a growth factor that's in the plus to consider those other developments that maybe are smaller, that have volumes going through those intersections that we analyzed.
Are you familiar with I Park?
I have not, uh, been told to consider...
That's the former I D S site that they're building out right now. There's a lot of businesses coming in and different uses of the property coming in. It's a significant development.
So, so, Mark, I think, and, and the net is that you need to incorporate what I Park has, has released as their view of traffic based off of what they, I mean, they just, just, I think last month, provided that to us. So, um, if you need to get a copy of it, reach out to, to, to Jackie. I guess I'll be a to-do for Amy, Amy to coordinate that.
Did they consider our previously approved development volumes in their study?
The one you just released?
What?
I think, uh, well, there hasn't been a full study done yet, uh, from I Park. The preliminary traffic generation from, from some of the development there has, has incorporated, uh, your development.
Okay, so our volumes are less than what we had previously approved. So if they considered our volumes from the previously approved project, then they're considered in their studies as well, which is how their, how traffic studies are done is based on the order of which that they're completed in the process as far as coming into the town. So them considering our previously approved development volumes considers our development volumes.
So Brendan, then, I would like for, for you to make, ensure that we are, you know, tied out on, on both ends on, on the traffic studies.
Right. We did give, uh, the traffic study a reality check just from the, you know, the traffic volumes that we have and that we have taken in the area and from other, um, other developments, but we'll take it... But we'll take another look just to be certain.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And Brendan, were you comfortable with the conclusion that was stated here that it's insignificant as compared to the total volume currently running through the intersections?
Based on the, the traffic generation from the site, yeah, it didn't, you know, it didn't change. And I know Mark didn't necessarily talk about how intersections are rated with level of service. But it didn't change the, the level of service for these intersections. You know, it added, certainly adds some more traffic. It'll, it'll add a little bit of delay, but it kept it in the same, the same level of services that are currently being enjoyed out there or not enjoyed.
So somebody currently waits one light, they're still only waiting one light, but it may be fifty-three seconds instead of fifty-nine seconds, something along those lines?
Exactly.
I also wanted to point out that approximately twenty-five percent of the student, school age children are projected to go to non-public school, homeschooling or private schooling, so.
Quick question.
We know that because they look at census data and they get information from the previous.
Hold on, guys. You'll get your turn to speak.
They know that because they look at census data and what previously occurred. And they also know that because they poll households when they move them and know what's, what students are attending public school or not. Now, obviously, this year's an outlier. People probably won't send their kids back to public school as readily as they would have last, last year, so.
So for all the units that you have, do you have an age breakdown of the estimated who will we buy? Like a, you know.
Well, what?
Like a demographic.
Yeah, I have, I have that. I.
This is all the studies that I looked at and breakdown of the students ages.
That's what you sent us today?
Yeah.
Is it just?
Sorry, what?
No, 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 not the students. I'm talking about the actual, everybody living in there.
They're in there, yeah.
They're in there.
Yep. The first spreadsheet.
Well, he's looking at that. The first gentleman was asking some questions about the water runoff. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, again, that's, we're showing that it's all infiltrating. There's currently an existing pond, stormwater pond on the west, west end? On the west end? What?
You mean where we live?
It's adjacent to the.
You mean our neighborhood?
Now, let's, come on, this, I really, I asked, hold on, Amy. I asked upfront for you to be respectful and not be condescending. So if you don't mind, please, let Amy speak and then I'll, I'll ask, ask you to raise your hand and you come up. Go ahead, Amy.
So it's on the west, what? The storm, the stormwater pond that exists is on the west end of the property adjacent to the Central Hudson right of way.
Okay.
And is there a plan to change the size of that stormwater pond?
That pond is not going to change. The stormwater pond that is on the northeastern side will be, I don't, it will be, it will be graded out to accommodate and hold stormwater. However, the soil is, allows for infiltration, so we're not showing any runoff from the site.
And the current development proposed as compared to the original business development, is it more or less impervious surface?
It's less.
Mr. Chairman, we're also, we're also working with the applicant in terms of the drainage study. So we're still currently reviewing the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And we have asked, we have asked them to repeat the soil tests that were done for the previous, you know, development. Because I believe they're over ten years old, so we've asked for, you know, new testing to be performed. And, you know, we're looking closely at the drainage, so.
Okay.
We're not, you know, there yet, so I just want to make sure that we understand that. So we're looking at it still.
Okay. You just step to the side for Amy. All right, gentlemen, yes, you, you had your hand up.
Yes.
Please make sure you put your name and address on the.
Hi, my name is Paul Peterkin, I live on Circle Drive.
Is there a form for you to fill out there, Jackie?
Yeah.
Okay, just please fill that in before you start.
Want to fill it out?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just, just a few things. One, the traffic. I know you do your job, you probably do it well. People don't look at signs. I live on Circle Drive and I come out by that gas station. There's a sign there, no exit. They come right out, all right? So let's not fool ourselves with the traffic, because it's going to go on with this place. They're going to be making less when they're not supposed to. And that's people, that's just being, I gotta get there before the next guy. Traffic light is going to increase no matter what you guys say, all right? How many people here, even you guys, live near this project? You do? You do? All right. But most of the town board doesn't. All right? You guys had nothing in the game here. You really don't. We do.
Sir, you gotta speak this way.
All right, but we do, we live here, okay? I lived here about thirty years. I remember it was Andre's farm. I remember when you guys approved Stone Ridge. I remember those days of rain that your building department didn't check on these values. Building it with retention ponds with the pipe coming out in the continent's property. We had the supervisor telling me that expect it because of global warming. And he said, was it East Fiskel Creek? No, it was Stone Ridge because we took all the trees down. Hey, it's building, I understand it. I used to clear lots. I know what happens when things aren't done right. We flooded in our community back there. You guys changed the flood zones. Some of the houses were never in flood zones and they don't flood. Now they do. They gotta pay for flood insurance, all right? Could have been avoided if you guys did your job and inspected. That's right. All right? This all falls on you. That's right. We don't want to do this again. You're saying.
You have retention pond at the bottom. Yes, you do. It does not work.
Sir, sir.
Hey, sir, we can't hear you when you turn over.
All right, sir, wait, more importantly, you, you shouldn't face the lady. You don't have your mask on.
All right, I'm sorry about that.
So just here, just.
I'm sorry, okay. But there is a retention pond there, she's right. How's that one little retention pond going to hold all this water coming off roofs? Three different roofs, big buildings. We got blacktop. Where is the storm drains going to go? Are they going to IBM? Is there a waste treatment plant that I don't know about over in IBM? Are the storm drains going to go to IBM? I don't know. You guys know? Does anybody can answer that question, just where's the storm water going to go? Because if it goes into that retention pond, it's going into my neighborhood and it's going to flood my neighbors again. Simple, guys. It's really simple here, all right? The other thing I want to know is you got apartments. Nobody's actually going to own any of these. They're not condos or anything like that. They're just apartments?
That's right.
Okay. How many are you donating to low income? Is there any going to be in low income here? And what are the prices of these apartments? I want to know that tonight. Does anybody have that answered on the board? Do you have to give a certain portion to low income here?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
Are you, you're not going to do that to get a grant from the governor or something?
No. No. East Fiskel, no. East Fiskel has met its requirement with respect to workforce housing. And we're not obligated to provide any more. This project doesn't receive any of the HUD money or et cetera that a, a workforce housing development would get.
What's priced on these?
I don't, they'll tell you that, I don't know that.
Nobody knows that.
It, it's in the documents, sir.
Why don't you?
When you're finished.
Why don't they just do condos and have somebody own it? You know? You're going to have them going into another person's neighborhood with other children. You don't know who these people are, I'm sorry to say it. But we gotta protect our community.
Right.
You know, we're not protecting it by just putting apartments. And plus, let's say you have to do low income, you're saying no, but you don't know in reality of things when everything gets said and done. Why don't you do this in town? Four-story apartment buildings in town. Now you think about it, that's a beautiful idea because, look, you got restaurants in town, you got stores in town, and you got pedestrian traffic where people can walk and do things. And it might open up other businesses. Here on the corner, what are you going to cross the street to I park, maybe? With the thirteen kids that maybe or may not be there? You don't know. It's all guesswork. You build a house, you're going to get somebody who's committed to that house. You're building an apartment, you get somebody that's like, hey, it ain't mine, I don't care. Here's my rent. I have my garbage here, what are you guys going to do with the garbage? The refuse. Right? You know, a lot of critters, a lot of raccoons. You're going to be affecting these people that live right behind it.
That's right.
Now, you know, you guys can do what you want to do. It looks like you guys all got a settlement already and you're just giving us look service. That's what it looks like.
Sir, sir, I'm going to stop you there because the characterization is not necessary. We're all residents, office board, we've sent kids.
But you didn't do anything for us when we flooded.
Wait. I've sent my kids to gone to John Jay, so we're part of this. This is why we're having this public hearing. So we can hear your concerns. I don't live directly there, but still, we're listening and making sure the developer addresses your, your question. So do you have additional questions?
Well, the ref, that's what I want to know, the refuse.
Yes. I, I know it is, but I'm going to have them.
You got trucks now. You're saying there's so many cars that are going in and out at a certain times of day. You got delivery people. You got all sorts of people going in and out of places. So you're giving us a bunch of like whitewash here. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for your questions. So, so Amy, start off with a, a good understanding of the building, how the water is going to flow off. I know, we, we know there's more work to be done on your stormwater runoff and how it's going to be handled. But also, you, you already mentioned about IBM and how you're going to use, I should have said Global Foundries utilized their facility. And that, and I think they need to understand, that needs to be known as well.
We are tying into the water and sewer systems that are currently on Global Foundry. We are not discharging any stormwater off-site.
Okay, so, so it's important, so that stormwater plan is going to have to make sure it's.
We're going to manage everything on-site. All the roof runoff, all the impervious runoff will be managed on-site.
Stormwater doesn't go to Global Foundry processing. The stormwater goes to retention. Sir, sir. The stormwater will go to a retention pond on-site?
We have two retention ponds on-site. One existing, one's proposed, but yes, it will all be managed on-site.
Okay, I thought you said one of them you were going to level out.
We're going to grade out to make, it's not, I don't believe it's depressed yet. We're going to, we're going to make it out.
You're going to create it, okay.
An infiltration basin.
The, the, the water from the apartment usage will all go to Global Foundry. So anybody running dishwashers, laundry?
It goes to a sewer system. It goes to the sewer system that currently exists on Global Foundry. The town of East Fiskel put this infiltrate, this infrastructure in place knowing that there would be future expansion. So there is currently an existing forest main that is not being used, that is intended to be used for development on this side of Route fifty-two. We're going to tie into that.
Is it septic over there?
It's a sewer system.
Where is the sewer system going, man? It's got to go somewhere.
There's a waste treatment plant on, on-site at Global Foundry. Yes, there is. There's been one there since it was IBM thirty-five years ago.
How much can that hold?
Well, we're currently required to design it for about forty thousand gallons per day. We're not producing nearly that amount.
We're designing what? A pipe go across, three? What are you designing?
The pumping system.
The pipe?
Everything. It's going to go under Route fifty-two.
Yeah, so, I mean, she's, she's not, so it'll have, it should take, it'll take care of everything out of the, out of that complex, pump it across the street into the waste facility owned by Global Foundry. But they've already made that agreement.
Well, there's an interim, Mr. Chairman, there's an interim. We have, the town has a sewage pump station that's, that is located over across the street. So their plan is to bore under the highway and get to our pump station. And we may have, or they may have to pay for some upgrades to the pumps. But from that, from that pump station that's already there, we do have a forest main that, that ends up at the Global Foundry's sewage treatment plant. So that's the other plan.
Okay, so, and so Amy, no, as far as stormwater, that is still.
Yeah, stormwater is in our core, that's correct.
Now, he also brought up about the, what's the, the projected rent for those apartments?
So again, they're one and two bedrooms. They're going to be market rate, so they're probably going to be in the range of fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. There's nothing being proposed to go to low-income housing. It will all be managed by the applicant as the site owner. And any kind of refuse or nuisance will be remedied.
Yeah, now, where is the refuge containers at?
We're showing.
On the, the, the western side of the?
We have, we have one on the far western side for building number two and one on the eastern side for building number one. It's basically right in front of building number one.
So two, two containers?
Two containers. If, you know, pickup can occur more frequently or less frequently as needed, so.
Do you know, Amy, if there's going to, if there's going to be an on-site manager here or not sure yet?
I don't know. I don't know. But the applicant is, they're local, they live here, they have an office space right down the road from.
Did you find out? Because that, because that would be something that would be, like, helpful. If there was, if there was somebody there that was, you know, in charge of the facility, you know, they live there.
Yeah.
I think you get a better, you know, policing of the development. So if you could just go find that out from the applicant.
Was that everything?
Can I just, I want to say again, because I think we said it incorrectly the first time you talked about it and I, I want to make sure it's very clear. So we're not, we're not controlling the no-left turns by stop signs. We're controlling them by actual paved raised curbing that doesn't allow the left turn.
Correct.
And that's on the, on turning left out on Route fifty-two will have curbing that prevents it. And for cars trying to turn into the project, left from Palin in, you're going to have curbing that's only allowing a right turn. So they'd be driving into curbing if they were trying to do that.
That's correct.
Because I would agree, stop signs probably wouldn't be sufficient. Sorry, I mean, no turn signs.
I believe there's a median at the Route fifty-two entrance now that projects traffic in one direction.
Is there curbing that can be made to prevent somebody from making a left-hand turn? Because I agree, coming out of the gas station, I think there's a. I've seen people jump right over that curb because it's so flat to make a left-hand turn.
Well, there's mountable curbing and we can, we can just, we can use regular eight-inch or six-inch curbing, which would prevent it.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Any concern with fire access if we did that?
Well, people will just make the left anyways and they just, because it's so low-profile curbing that they just run right over.
Is there concern with fire access if you raise the curbing?
I think.
For the, oh, right, okay.
So. Just a, a clarity of that. I mean, they're, they're, just so everyone understands, there's different types of curbing. A lot of times those median islands are, have mountable curbing or you can put in a vertical curve, it's called a barrier curve. So a barrier curve, I think what you're suggesting controls traffic better. We do still need to evaluate the site for emergency vehicle access, so we'll have to look at that to make sure. Sometimes we put it on certain sides of the island, but we have to make sure that the fire apparatus can get in and out also, so.
Yeah, I ran that around. I think it can do it without going over the median, but Mark just brought up a good point that we'll have to get the input from the DOT to allow for that type of curbing on Route fifty-two and from the DPW on Palin.
Thank you.
I think I got everything he asked.
Okay. I agree. And you've got some additional items to?
Yes.
Look up at this place. All right. And make sure you put your name, fill out the form that the day is.
My name is Robert Leone, I live on Ninety-four Round Hill Road and I have three children and more to come on that later. You mentioned this would not be approved for low-income housing. However, I was at the last hearing and I feel that I've been lied to along with every one of the neighbors. This became an apartment complex where before it was supposed to be a medical building. I'd ask everybody that lives in Hopewell, as you do, if there's any other apartment complexes such as this. I'd also ask you, why do you think some of our home values are the highest in comparison to surrounding areas? If you look at the Grange, it's taxes, if you look at Fishkill and Wapinders, it's apartment complexes. And what separates us from that is the fact that we have single-family homes and that's why it's a desirable neighborhood along with the school district, along with the police and fire department. Apartments are the problem. If they were condos, I don't think everybody would have as big of a deal from the neighborhood, to be frank with you. I think about not only the value of the property, but that's not the most important thing. To be honest, for me, it's, it's the safety of my three children. I have three children and now we're gonna put fifty-one apartments here with, you're gonna say eighty-something people, more like a hundred, and you're gonna tell me that there's only thirteen children and you're gonna tell me they go to private schools. Well, in my neighborhood, there's over thirty kids, maybe forty, and not one goes to a private school. So, I don't believe your math and the numbers that you're using can be swayed to present anything they like to the board, to be frank with you. And I know that you all don't live in our neighborhood and this doesn't impact you as it does me and the safety of my children and the property value, but I ask you, when does it stop? And when do we become Fishkill or Wapinders and have groups of apartment complexes all over that hurt our community, frankly, hurt our community value and hurt the safety of my children, I'll go back to that. You tell me that it's going to be fine, the safety, because there's going to be a sidewalk, that you're already preparing, it's going to be built like this is approved. What about the traffic through my neighborhood? What about the fact that my children, along with all of my neighbors' children, are young and they ride their bikes? It's a family neighborhood. It was already not safe when you had to close the cul-de-sac because the John Jay children driving the school would cut through and make it difficult and scary for our children. We had to take matters in our own hands, put up signs that said, please slow down. But now you're gonna take fifty-one families, they're gonna have cut-throughs. You're telling me there's a hundred, what happens when there's a party? I know it's COVID, but when there's a party, where are they going to park? I respect the gentleman in the runoff, but frankly, one of the runoffs is in the middle of our neighborhood and you're telling me that's not going to get flooded? I, I just don't believe it and I don't think any of my neighbors believe it and that's why we don't approve it. Not because we don't have respect for them to make money in business, it's not I Park. If it was I Park, I don't think anybody would have an issue. But I don't know any other neighborhood in Hopewell that you go through an apartment complex to a neighborhood of single-family homes, I don't see it. I only know of one condo complex in Chelsea Cove and I've lived here for forty years. I've also moved my family here from Fishkill because of the appeal of what Hopewell brings. Maybe this is the start, maybe it's the end, I don't know, but it makes me wanna look elsewhere and I shouldn't have to feel like I have to move my family on a home that I spent my whole life to move to in an area I wanted to move to because of this. It's not fair. We approved the project last time because of what it was going to be, like an orthopedic associate style, and this is not that. So, I, I don't have any questions, but I don't think I can believe anything that the woman has to say. I appreciate you all giving her lots of things to do along with her client, but it, it won't change the end game if we get to this point when it comes to safety and property values, it just won't for my children and it won't for yours as well. So, I don't have any questions, I just have a lot of frustrations along with everybody in this room and that's why everybody's vocal. Sad to see that you all are talking about the project already approved. Thank you.
Just as a, just as a point of clarification, you're right, we sometimes refer to it as if it's built, but our, our intent is not to say it's already approved. It's not approved. As we have these conversations, these are things that if we want to make sure there's changes made to the plan, we do tend to talk about them in the present tense, but that's not the intent of, or, or not the intended intent of the board, just so you know that. And this process, this public hearing process for us is how we understand what you're thinking about, what you're concerned about. And you do hear us asking the applicant to do additional things because we feel that's very important and we want to make sure we make a right decision. With someone who owns property in the town, they have the right to build and develop. This is a big change to this property from what was originally approved, so that's why we're here and that's why we're listening. I hope, and I know it's frustrating, but I hope that you understand that we are all here listening and trying to react and have an appropriate decision with something like this.
Well, Mrs. D, I appreciate you listening, but I hope you're not hearing and you all are listening because if every neighbor in our development is speaking on this, are you listening to the improvement? A lot of people here, a lot of people speaking out there.
And again, I would just say, that's part of what this process is, is we are here to listen. And just one other quick comment on something you mentioned. There's no plan right now to connect access between 52 through this property to the neighborhood.
What about the bus that goes through?
No, the bus would, would not come through, that bus would, would do whatever it does today where it turned, wherever it turns today is where it would turn.
Where do the fifty-one families, I have a question then, where do the fifty-one families walk their dog? Where do they walk and use, you know, I don't have a problem with it, we move to a quiet neighborhood, where do the fifty-one families ride their bikes with their children, go for a walk, where do they go? In that, that small two plot area that's designed for two single-family homes, that's where they're gonna walk? Or are they going to go to the neighborhood?
So, I want to clarify a few things, you're right, there's no intention to open up the gate on Round Hill Road. There is going to be pedestrian access so that students can walk to a bus stop. We are providing recreational areas for dog walking and this project meets zoning. This project. There's other, there's other.
So, so, I, I think she just, she just pointed out, this is what they have planned. So, what we're gonna continue the listening process, 'cause we may say, hey, that's insufficient, but again, let her, let her go ahead and answer the questions, so.
Again, this is zoned for this, this project is not as intensive as it could be. It's allowed to have a four-story building and we're only showing three. It's allowed to have fifty percent lot coverage and we're under thirty-five on each of the lots. So, these rentals, I don't even know if there will be dogs allowed. I don't, I, I mean, there's, there's actually more control when you have a rental property than if you had condominiums. Of course they'd be allowed.
Okay, thank, Amy, I think you answered the general question. Do we have anyone else from the public that wants to speak?
Definitely have a concern with the traffic going to John Jay, but I think that's been addressed, I think that's gotta be looked at. But I do have a concern about parking spaces, they're saying that for fifty-one units, there are only a requirement of eighty-nine parking spaces and they are looking at doing a hundred. Fifty-one families can definitely easily push a hundred cars. When I first moved here, it was just me and my wife and our newborn and we had three cars, 'cause I had a company car. Right now, we have four cars, 'cause my newborn is now seventeen, she's got a car, we still have a company car. So, there are three of us, there are four cars. I don't believe that a hundred parking spaces is gonna be enough and where is the overflow going to go? And gentleman behind me just mentioned something about a party. If all the parking spaces are gonna be taken up by the residents, when people come to visit, where are they gonna park? That's gonna end up in the neighborhoods. And as far as bus stops, we know in the wintertime, come on, you guys are all driving as well, what happens in rain, cold weather and snow? I didn't want to wait out standing on the side of the road with my child for the bus, so I would drive to the bus stop and wait for the bus. So, how many cars is that gonna put in the morning parked on the side of the road in the residence where the bus stop is suggested? And one last question, if we're looking at a hundred parking spaces, I'd like to know, because I've seen previous projects where snow removal has ended up taking up parking spaces and that wasn't talked about. So, is snow removal going to end up in allocated parking spaces? And what will that reduce the parking to, especially in a year where we have bad snow, where we haven't the last couple, but we certainly have in the past? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have dedicated snow removal spots on-site and the parking is calculated based on the town's code and we're providing additional on top of that. These are just one and two-bedroom units, they're not, they're not, you know, huge party-sized units to have fifty people over. So, additional parking should be adequate as shown on-site and we're, again, following the town's.
Is the snow allocation though taking up parking spots?
No, 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 no.
Or it's a separate designation?
It's separate. And we're not gonna push it onto Round Hill.
Can, can you show where the, where your, your snow removal spot has been designated?
We have an area here.
On the west side and which is near that?
That's on our site and that is on, that's in between the paved area and the, and the existing drainage pond. And then we have areas here, that's on the east side and areas along the road on the south side of it. Those are the three areas, I'm sure.
You know where they are, where the snow guy pushes the snow, that's where the area is going to be.
So, they have to, you know, they will have to direct them where the, where the place of snow, because, again, because, because of the, the, you know, just the buildup of snow and making sure it is far away and not taking, blocking spaces.
Correct.
You, well, just make sure you're making note that, you know, of that. Just, just wait, she, she still has, and gentleman brought up about the, the bus stop. The bus stop that you agreed on is, is within the, is in the turn of the cul-de-sac?
Yes. So, the bus currently enters that subdivision. This isn't gonna add an extra bus, it's going to.
Please, this, I mean, you'll have opportunity to come up and, and, and ask a follow-on question, so, what were you saying, Amy?
So, we're providing pedestrian access to Round Hill Road for school bus stop. We're not, we're not opening it up again, we're not opening the gate, there'll be no vehicular traffic through the subdivision other than the school bus, based on the subdivision, or development.
Now, is there another, is there another option of when, when the bus comes down Palin before it makes the light that you have out there? Could that be a potential bus stop, so we don't have, have pickup in the cul, in the cul-de-sac?
Everybody, there, there, I don't know where the bus stop is on that portion of the road, but the, the school district, the busing superintendent said it would be on the cul-de-sac. There's no, there was a concern at the first planning board meeting when we were in front of you that there would be school bus traffic created from this. So, there'll be no turns in or out of school buses into or out of the site.
How, you're not answering the question. He asked about the people that are now going to be taking up residence in these apartments with children on daily wear of inclement weather and they don't want their children standing out for the inclement weather. So, therefore, are those people going to be driving their children and sitting in hard development?
Well, there's, there's, there's road space to parallel park within the site. Within the site, so then, if the children need to go to the cul-de-sac to get on the bus, they don't need to leave the site to sit in their car with them.
I, I think, I think the question should maybe be prefaced a little differently. And I think what it comes down to is can there be a separate pickup for people with children there rather than having the possibility of those parents driving their children, whether they carry that or not, into our development and putting our children, our pets and our development at risk?
Conversations with the busing superintendent, the DOT and the DPW, which we have approval from both the DPW and the DOT again, have been that they do not want an additional bus movement and it was a concern of the planning board as well.
Amy, is there, let's, let's say that the, and I'm not sure what the distance is between the building doorways and where the proposed bus stop is, but is there a potential that there's a covered bus stop installed there?
We could put a, yeah, we could put a covered bus stop in.
Which would likely be used rather than having people get in their cars and drive around. We could have parents walk their children to a bus stop.
It's at the bottom of someone's driveway, two people's driveway. It's about four hundred and fifty yards from where the proposed apartment is supposed to be.
The, the, the school district committed to adding a bus stop at the cul-de-sac.
Because there's no way to turn off Palin to get into the, through the project.
Amy, you know what I'm asking, as far as a covered bus stop?
I do, yes.
Where the spot would be at the cul-de-sac where the bus would actually pick up the children.
But closer to, on our site, not, not on Round Hill Road, yes.
Mrs. D, that's a great point you bring up, but what about the trees that are supposed to block this development? Now, there's gonna be trees and then there's a spot of this overhanging bus stop, is that what you're telling me?
There's an existing cul-de-sac there with an emergency access, we wouldn't be able to put trees there. But I think we could find a way to have maybe the stop, the bus stop, if there, if we were to build one, be perpendicular to the road or something like that, where it wouldn't take up as much of the profile of one that's parallel to the road. I mean, there's ways we can look at that.
Yeah, 'cause we were told that there's gonna be ten bulk of trees, but it's blocking this whole area. That doesn't sound like we're talking about that anymore.
Well, the, the bus stop shelter would be on a paved portion of the area, so it would be basically an extension off of the roadway. There'd still be room to put in trees.
Amy, are we missing landscaping that was originally in the, the plan between the property and the adjoining?
We haven't changed the landscaping from what you've last seen.
The previous plan had landscaping between the buildings and us all.
Well, except for the emergency access gate. That doesn't have to be, and, and I think what's being suggested that the applicant look at is that the other multi-unit developments in the town, Wildflower Hills, Hopewell Muse, Hopewell Apartments, all have a structure sheltering the children waiting for the bus. And I think the board is asking the applicant to explore that as a way of sheltering the children waiting for the bus and to confirm that the bus is gonna stop at the cul-de-sac.
But the trees go on there though?
No, the trees are there, but there were never trees that would block the emergency gates because if your road is blocked by a tree down, the gates can be opened so your area can exit, et cetera.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no trees at the cul-de-sac.
The right-of-way, the right-of-way to the town, sir, when this was previously developed, has, ends in the cul-de-sac. So, except for an emergency access easement that this property owner will grant, there's no rights to make it a public road.
I go to a medical building outside, I wanna go take a walk or walk my dog, if I live somewhere, I go.
Well, anyone can trespass on anyone else's property unless it's stopped.
Well, that neighborhood is served by a public road, that's a town road, right? It is, but it's a town road.
Okay, so, I think you, you did respond to all the questions that came up. If, anyone else? Sir, you spoke once.
What are you making on the taxes? How much tax revenue is this gonna generate? Quick question.
I, I don't know.
Well, you know, I want, I want to ask about a garage, you know what they said to me? How much are you spending on your garage? I said, what are you talking about, isn't a square footage is a nose, how much you spend? Oh, if I spend five hundred dollars in my garage, you're gonna tax me a five hundred, if I spend five million, you're gonna tax me a five hundred. If I spend $5,000, you're gonna tax me a $5 million. So what's this project cost?
Apartments are assessed by the town based on the rent roll and there's a formula that New York State uses. Eighty percent of the taxes that will be collected from this development are paid to the Waukesha Central School District. The other set, uh, 20% is then divided between the county, the town, the fire district and the East Fish Gill Library District.
So you're telling me my taxes are gonna go down if this goes in?
Uh, theoretically, but we all know that doesn't happen.
It ain't going down. Hey, we're gonna have school this year.
My name is Natalie Jean Shavoni, uh, live on nine Cooper's Lane in Stone Ridge Estates. We were one of the first homes to be built in that development. When we first met with the builders and the architects and the realtors, we were assured that that was going to be a development of residential upscale homes. After we've been there now well over 10 years, um, we found out that the two lots that are facing Route 52 have now been zoned for commercial use and we were told that it was going to be an upscale strip mall, which was going to have something like a medical office, a bank. And at that time, I said, I'm not really happy about this. I don't want, if I wanted to live in Rockland County, I would've moved to Rockland County. If I wanted to live in Manhattan, I would move to Manhattan. We purposely came here and built our home with the pretense that this was not going to happen. Well, now it appears that it's going to. With that being said, I'm also concerned, as sure are many of the people in this room, about the property value. On top of that, our safety. Our development, although many of you aren't familiar with Stone Ridge Estates, you don't live in our community, it is indeed a community, we look out for one another. We are essentially a family. We might not break bread every day, but we look out for one another. The other morning I came out to walk my dogs, my neighbor came running out to tell me that she saw a litter of coyotes pups. She's like, you might wanna go home. If I'm walking my dogs and UPS happens to come zooming through, I wave down and I go, slow it down, there are children in here. We all look out for one another. Now, here's my question. Now you wanna put in an apartment building and not just one, you're putting in two with well over 50 apartments. Here's my question, and without being sexist, racist, ageism, how are you going to select the demographic of the people that are going in here? On top of that, what are going to be the lease terms? Is it three months, six months, nine months, a year? We don't know any of these questions, or at least they have not been answered that I'm aware of. So are we going to have transient people floating in and out every three months? Where then that potentially poses another risk for us? We don't know the type of people that are coming in there. Now again, I don't know every single person by name, but I know their faces. I also know the character of these people that live in my development because I see the way that they care for their children, the way that they care for their families, the way that they care for their properties. When people live in apartments, and I don't know how many of you here have lived in apartments, it doesn't matter because it's not yours, there's no sense of ownership. So your sense of responsibility, you don't care. You don't care if you take the trash out, you don't care if there's holes in the wall, you don't care if you spill something on the floor, you don't care if your trash doesn't make it into the dumpster because who cares, I don't own this. So now we've got rats, we've got raccoons, which I'm not saying that we don't have already, but we take pride in ownership. I'm sure if I were to come in as a developer and in say any one of your developments or even in your backyard wanna put up, not even 50 units, I'm just gonna say 10. Would you be happy about it if I said, well, you know what? It's gonna boost revenue for the county or for the town? Hogwash. I'm sure you would be very, very upset, as we all are. We all moved here and we all built these beautiful homes. Many of us spent well over half a million dollars, if not to the millions, to have these upscale homes in this upscale community that was pretty elite. And now you're gonna put this? And I don't care how pretty they are, I don't care how much you wanna put them up and put whatever bow ties and ribbons, it's still an apartment complex. Additionally, let's talk about all the other vacant properties that are sitting throughout Duchess County. Why not go and develop those? That's just a thought, call me crazy. Additionally, now you're going to say hypothetically put these up. Let's talk about the construction, do we know how long? We're looking at the construction time? Is it 12 months, 24 months, six months? On top of that, let's talk about the noise level. What time is this going to start? What time is it going to end? What about all these construction vehicles? Where are they going to go? What, what about all the trash? Where is all that going to go? Have you guys considered that about our community? About what that's going to do to our families? To our lives? Some of us don't have a nine-to-five job. Some of us are essential workers, we work in hospitals, we work in police departments. We don't have a nine-to-five schedule, we have rotating shifts. If I have to go to work and I have to work a 12-hour shift with my patients, how am I going to function if they're starting construction at 6:00 AM and I'm coming home at 7:00 and I need to sleep until 3:00 or 4:00 in order to go back to work to care for my patients with all that ruckus? Just something to consider. Now, the kids for school, um, the pickup in Stone Ridge, I know we just addressed that, so, but I just really encourage you to really think about that. Again, it's, it's putting our families at risk by bringing in other people, other vehicles that are gonna be coming in and clogging through our development. And again, that's lovely that you wanna put up a little, you know, overhang or, or a, a protected space for them to stand, but many times, parents don't even want their kids to do that. They will sit there with their cars running, as I saw before we had a dedicated road, many of the parents would come and sit in front of our home with their cars running with their children in it because there wasn't a, a fancy little box for the kids to stand in. It didn't matter, it didn't matter if it was 85 degrees and sunny, if it was raining or if it was snowing. The parents were parked down in front of our driveway. Additionally, you were talking about the parking, you were talking about 100 spaces. Well, I've lived in apartments before and I've lived in condos before and yes, people do have parties. Now, it might not be 50 people, but they do have parties. Everybody has a birthday, most people experience a death, graduation, marriages, births. I'm, I'm sure everyone's experienced that. So what about visitor parking? Is there gonna be an overflow for visitor parking? So is it just 100 spots designated to the residents? But where's going to be the visitor parking? Where's that gonna be? So these are just some of my thoughts and my concerns and I really would hope that every single person in here, not just the people who reside in our little community, really consider what you're doing and what you're asking of us. It's not really fair and I understand everybody's out to make money. Look, everybody wants to, to get ahead in life and I get that and we're not begrudging that. But we've been kinda bamboozled. You told us one thing, then you took it back, you told us something else, you took it back and now you're giving us this? Shame on you all. Thank you.
Amy, why don't you go ahead and come on back up?
There'd be something residents, 100 spots, I mean, 11 guests can visit on a certain day?
There's 51 units, there's approximately 100 to 104 projected residents and.
If you said 100 spots though, but 80 something by your metrics, by the traffic gentleman.
They're the town, they're the.
Are there 20 spots available for anybody to come over? 20 spots for 50?
Those are the town's metrics and they build in an expansion, so it's not one unit, one parking space. There's additional parking spaces required and calculated based on the bedroom count of each unit.
How would you get restricted people? Five in a place, I could bring in 10 people.
Okay, just, just a minute, so Amy, we have, you have 51 units now and how many parking spaces right now planned?
100.
100. And is there potential for expansion if there's a need?
Yes, there's space to do parallel parking along the roadway.
Is there additional land that could be converted to permanent spaces if there's a need?
I'll have to look at that.
Like land banked park?
Yeah, I mean, what we have left there is gonna be dependent on stormwater.
I think we should look at that to see if there's land banked parking to see if there is an overflow, we can evaluate it typically. If, if we do that on one of our plans, we would look at it about a year after it opened.
Let me just, did your question on lease terms get answered? And I apologize for having to step away, sorry.
No, no, yes.
There will not, there won't be less than one year lease terms.
But my, the question to that as well was, um, without being racist, sexist and ageist, how, how are you going to select guaranteed that there's only going to be 13 to 16 children per that entire 50?
Well, I can't guarantee that, what I did was look at the information that was available that has been used over and over again, different studies that have been created and it's a, it's an industry standard, that's what projects these children. The other way, the, the apartment rates will dictate who can afford to live there. There are not gonna be affordable housing, so if they're young professionals, if they're people who wanted to downsize, people who have respect for their property even though they don't own it, it's people that can afford that, that's.
Well, I, I think, I, I think that we can't say whether or not someone leasing a unit does or doesn't care about the property. What we can say is as a town, we'll have a single property owner that if there is an issue at the site, will be expected to make the site comply.
Absolutely, and they would be responsible and they would be finable and.
Absolutely.
And my other question to that, um, it's not even a question, it's more a response, is that that was a pretty ignorant thing to say because if you look at all the current studies and the current, uh, data that is going on right now with the real estate market, homes are going on, on the market anywhere between 400 and 500,000 and within 24 hours they're getting 10 full price offers, many of them cash offers, and these are people coming up from Manhattan or Lower Westchester who escaped the whole issues with COVID and the lawlessness that is going on. So you need to tell me that you're trying to say to me that the people who can afford a $2,500 rent are going to be okay and they're not going to worry about children or they're going to not worry about anything?
That's not, that's not what I said at all.
I think, I think regardless of what was said or intended, I'm gonna say again, there is a single property owner here that would be expected to maintain that property to whatever the appropriate standards are within the town and I think the town has some pretty decent standards as far as property maintenance.
Is there any way that you can restrict Section 8s?
If they're, if they're market rate housing, the, the real estate developer, the person who's gonna own the property has the ability to not take Section 8.
He's asking, he's asking a different question and I, I don't.
But Section 8 only covers a certain amount of rent, so if they can't afford even with Section 8.
Sir, hold on. This is, um, do you have an opinion on, or?
With Section 8, first of all, there's a maximum rent that they'll even subsidize throughout the county and, uh, these rents are above what would be subsidizable by Section 8.
But you don't know what the owner's gonna do. You don't know.
You know, everybody owns property, we can't, you're absolutely right, you don't know what a property owner's gonna do. They have to work within the confines of the state, federal and local laws.
Well, I both have two fairly houses in my neighborhood and I know.
And there's many illegal homes, sir, yes, and the town tries to go after them and then everybody objects because the residents have always had them, so.
Additionally, just because you can afford the rent doesn't mean you can afford the upkeep? Or it doesn't mean that you're going to be clean and sanitary?
Well, that's, that's.
We, we're sorry, I'm gonna say again though, it's not, it's not, we shouldn't worry about that because the town has the ability to enforce, to enforce standards with a single property owner and it is on that property owner to ensure that their tenants are respecting those rules.
Okay, it was also mentioned by Amy, by Amy, that there's probably not going to be a property manager on site.
I, I didn't say that either.
I don't think we said that.
I said I was gonna look into it and confirm and.
That's what I just said, that you weren't sure if you were going to have a property manager on site.
But whether they do or they don't, the landlord has an obligation through the town's procedures with code compliance and everything that is attached to it to maintain that property exactly the way the town wants it to be.
Okay, and if that doesn't happen, what is the average time to evict someone?
Well, first of all, uh, following up on that, the property maintenance code, on an annual basis, the town has to maintain approximately 50 derelict properties in the town that are single-family homes and the owners either abandoned them or they're there and they don't take care of it, gets out of compliance, there's a process, it gets dealt with, it gets leaned back on their tax bill. Same laws, probably stricter for multiple family because of health department involvement, et cetera. Okay, whether a landlord chooses to pay the fines and not evict the folks who are causing them the fines is a business decision, which I don't think they would tolerate. But we would go after them, find them and force the remedy of violations of the state property maintenance code and our partners in the health department would enforce any of the health department codes, just as we do with respect to single-family homes in the town that violate those codes.
And then if an eviction process were to start?
That's a private issue for the landlord to deal with, they go through a process with evictions.
But what is the average?
Well, New York State just modified the eviction law, but for non-payment or violation of codes, probably takes them about six months.
Okay, thank you.
Also, there is, but.
Well, I was gonna, no other thing she brought up is about the construction phasing.
That's what I was, yeah.
How was that, okay.
So, construction site management can occur whether it's a high-end strip mall or an apartment building. So noise ordinance can be adhered to, the site management as far as refuse and erosion control would be strictly, strictly monitored. The, what else?
It's the time period.
The time period, yeah, so the time period can be controlled by the town.
No, the time period from start of construction to completion.
Approximately two years.
How much?
Two years.
And, and you had a time of when this construction would start, like AM?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's.
And the time is, and, and then the other thing that I brought up was, um.
I, I made a list of you, you know, I just, but I just wanna make sure she, we'll, we'll keep stepping through.
So the, the time period right now, is it seven to five? I don't.
Seven AM to?
The zoning, I, I.
Seven to five, not on Sunday. But I'd have to verify by this.
So that's, that's currently in the town's code.
Yeah.
And then as far as construction vehicles and waste?
Waste can be managed onsite and there'll be, uh, regular pickups for debris and construction, construction waste would be, it would all be containerized onsite and truck traffic would either come in off of Palin Road or 52, probably Palin because that entrance has not been built yet. So we would put in the proper erosion control measures to make sure that Palin Road stayed clean throughout traffic, throughout, uh, construction.
And we typically require a construction phasing plan, so the town actually controls how the site is operated during construction.
And it gets inspected, it gets inspected for stormwater maintenance once a week by a contracted out inspector and.
You'll have still fence all the way around the case?
We'll have the appropriate erosion control measures.
Around the whole area?
Sometimes it doesn't make sense to put it around the whole area.
Yes, so, so, so we will put, put the, the appropriate erosion control in place for, for this project if it went forward.
Correct.
That's kind of what.
Typically for a project of this size, we require some type of environmental monitor that goes and inspects the site, provides reports to the building department to be able to monitor whether or not the site is being maintained correctly, whether or not there's any debris on the road or anything like that and the applicant or builder would be expected to clear and clean up any issues immediately. They face a stop work order if they don't do that. That's true of any building, it's not unique to this property.
Okay, so I think you answered all of it.
I'm sorry, did we say the trash enclosure, is there an actual enclosure or are they open bins? What, what's planned?
Proposed during, during construction or?
Uh, no, I meant.
There's a refuse enclosure, it's an enclosure.
Good.
Okay, come on. Uh, I was, I was getting a new face, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Leo.
Hello, my name is Leon Grebly. I live at ninety Round Hill Road and I appreciate the time to take my comments. You know, earlier today, I went on the website East Fishgill and I looked at certain things, I looked at the planning board. And I saw the mission of the planning board was to review and approve projects such as this, okay? And I'm going to make the assumption that the approval is with the best interest of the residents in mind. So, going forward with that, I've listened to the developers say what they're going to do about their project. I've listened to the concerns of some of the residents. My question is, what benefit does this project provide to the residents of our community? That's, that's the first question. What is the benefit? I mean, I've heard talk about lower property values, I've heard concerns about a lowering of our quality of life, but I've not heard how it makes us better. We moved here for a reason. We wanted a better life than what we had. I, I, so can anyone answer what our benefit is to putting this project in our neighborhood?
That's, that's what we let the applicant do.
Second, I have a cost concern. I know Amy presented us with some numbers and I'm a little concerned about them because the source was industry standards. Well, I can't go back and verify that, but I can use some common sense. They're proposing fifty-one units. Amy projects a hundred residents. That's less than two people per apartment. That doesn't make sense to me. She's saying eight to thirteen children. Even at her odd number of thirteen children, that means you're only going to have one child in every four units. That doesn't make sense to me. If you look at the number of children and I went on a site to look at what the town cost is per child to school annually, it's about thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Even with what she's proposing, if I take her number of thirteen, that's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Now, you couldn't tell us what they're going to generate, but I do have a low cost of what it's going to cost us. I suspect this project may even cost money to the community unless you look at it closer. But I am curious about one thing. You mentioned, there's a formula and eighty percent of what's collected goes to the Wappanoo Central School District. But I didn't catch what that eighty percent of was. Where did it come from?
The eighty percent of, everyone's tax bill, if you take your total taxes, eighty percent of approximately, it goes to, is your school tax bill and then the other twenty, twenty percent.
And the same thing would apply to this project. Eighty percent of the taxes.
It's the same for everybody in the town. This property will be assessed, the same formula that other properties in the town are assessed. There's different assessment methodologies that are used, whether it's a single-family home, a commercial plaza, or.
But here's my question. You already know, you got the project right here, you know it's fifty-one units, you know it's twenty-four or two families, you know it's twenty-seven new families.
But as part of the planning process in New York, there's a discussion of that in the environmental assessment form, which gives a range. And that can be calculated. That's a question that the planning board wants to have in the record. The town assesses, it will calculate it.
Okay, you see my concern, and I looked at some other figures. Typically in the apartments, you can approximate between the one family and two family, about three point five people overall on the average, okay? Section two thirty-five F in the tenant's law of New York State says, you really can't control how many people are in that apartment. Okay? You've got the tenant, you can have the tenant's immediate family and the tenant's children, okay? So, the numbers we're looking at can be on the low side. If you have a rent of fifteen hundred dollars, you're going to get some families with six, seven members, divided up between them, pay two hundred dollars each and live in that apartment, theoretically.
Theoretically, yes.
But I do think that the numbers that are being presented of a hundred residents, thirteen children, are way understated. And I ask you to use your common sense in thinking about that. One of the things that was talked about too, and I don't want to get into it too much, it has to do with the bus stop and the children. That's only part of the issue. If you have got the apartment complex and a walkway into our neighborhood, it means people can go back and forth. The reasons for that can vary, but people will go back and forth. People will park there and walk to their apartments, okay? People will have guests and park there and walk to those apartments, okay? When they start about the dog walking area, you know what? I know when I, I used to have a dog, I didn't want to walk around twenty feet. I'd stroll through the neighborhood. They've got access to the neighborhood. So again, all this goes back to, I don't see a benefit. I see a lessening of our quality of life, a lowering of our, our home values. I, I don't see the point. Unless you want to put money in the pockets of a developer, that's fine, but it's not helping the residents of the community that you're supposed to be serving. Thank you.
I don't know, there's, there was no questions there, so.
But, but there was a, the use of the, I mean, you could say the, what's the benefit? What, what, what are those, the expected tax revenue that's going to come from this, this property? I think that's worth denoting.
We'd have to calculate that. The recreation fees that would be generated from this would be over two hundred thousand dollars just from, just at the point of approval.
That's a one-time.
That's a one-time fee. And that's based on the unit count.
So I guess really that they're looking for the tabulation of the actual.
We can look at that, yeah.
Estimated tax.
Again, some of these are one-bedroom apartments, so they're not going to be, you know, they're presumably one or two people typically.
But I, I think you should scale it, just scale up from, from thirteen. So, you know, your worst-case scenario should be put, put forward as well.
For calculating the tax generation compared to the cost per student?
From, from a student pers, like, like, so maybe it won't be just thirteen kids, maybe there'll be twenty-four. So, just give us some, some range to, to, to look at the possible growth.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah. Is there anyone else? Please come up.
I am going to be very short. I owned two buildings, one in Queens, one in Yonkers, multiple dwell. I was a landlord. I didn't like vacancies. No landlord likes vacancies. I accepted section eight, accepted all kinds of people, although they come, they came through from the rental, from the real estate people. Though they were not what the realtor told me that they were going to be. They came in, I, I, I rented the apartment to one family, one mother, one father, two children. Next thing I knew, there was the uncle, there was the aunt, there were the sisters, and there were the nephews. Who are these people, I say? Or they are just visiting. They were visiting forever and ever and ever. I don't want to hear about these people telling us that they are not going to have people from section eight. Lies. They are lying. They will do whatever, whatever it takes. Their ultimate aim is money and they will do whatever it takes to generate whatever they want to generate. Thank you, that's all I have to say. Lies.
Are there any other? Yes, come on up. Sorry.
Okay, just a couple of things. Bob Falcone was here, the first one, okay? Do, do any of these buildings have terraces?
Have what? I'm sorry.
Terraces in the apartment?
Balcony, you mean?
Balconies.
It looks like they do.
Is there going to be any kind of, I don't know if you've, you know, been down through the city, but every place that they put a terrace or balcony, or whatever you want to call it, has bicycles hanging off it and all sorts of underwear and they're washed, because that's what's common. That's what's common, if you allow that. So, this is your town. I don't know if you drive past Fifty-two or you drive to Palin Road, but that's what you're going to be looking at when you come home every night, okay? That is exactly what you're going to be doing. People don't care. And if you rent, put rentals in there, they really don't care. If you made this condos or maybe half the amount of apartments that they own, I don't think most of these people would be in here, except for me with the water bug. What I'm seeing here is a big mess. And when they snowplow down Palin Road doing forty miles an hour with the slush and the snow, you know bushes ain't going to be looking too good. And your sidewalk ain't going to be looking too good either. I don't care how long you put the sidewalk, it's going to get covered with slush and snow, because where are you going to put the snow? Anyone that's ever experienced these, these garbage trucks come down the road twice, they destroy the guy's fence. You know that gray fence on Palin Road? Okay? You know who that was? The garbage trucks with the slush, okay? They come flying down at three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, trying to get the roads clear. Where's the snow go? They don't put it in the middle of the road, they throw it off to the side. And that's what's going to happen to all that over there, that, that pretty little picture you got there. Look, let's face it, these things do not belong here. We don't want them. I'm living here thirty years, most of these people who are living here thirty, thirty-five, forty years. Bad enough you flood us out, but now you're throwing salt into the wounds. And, and these poor people that invested five, six hundred thousand dollars with this big promise of stonewalls and all that, beautiful, beautiful. I mean, I look at, I like to look at it. It's, it's beautiful homes, but this ain't beautiful. And when you drive past this to get into their homes, all I see is ghetto. Thank you.
Amy, can you come up? Okay, on the, I'd like to know about the balcony and restrictions that you're going to put in place or plans to put in place or should put in place.
There are going to be balconies. There will be restrictions on what can be stored out there. Every, every place I've ever lived that had a balcony had rules on what you could have on the balcony and it was pretty strictly enforced.
Where's my privacy though? I'm looking into my house from the view of a balcony that looks right into my children's window.
I have rented places that did have restrictions on balconies and it, it was fine, it was.
There are. Sorry, I really, I expect, answer the question.
We are providing landscaping behind the buildings that will provide privacy. We have a view of.
Amy, the question is, so you're going to have the balconies, you said it's going to be three stories. From, from there, can you see into the development? You're not going to let me have Amy put it on tape, basically. So, Amy?
We are taking measures to make sure that the buildings are not viewable from, from the subdivision. We're adding a berm, we're planting trees, there'll be landscaping. The balconies are recessed. As you can see there, they're on the sides of the buildings, they're not on the front and the back. A portion of it, the narrow side is facing the front, but.
Michelle, have we looked at the landscaping plan?
I have. One of my, excuse me, one of my comments was to consider additional screening along the rear of the property, yes.
Okay. So I think what we would do is we'll re-review that landscaping plan with you and let's make sure that we have a revised rendering, if we could, of what the views would be from the subdivision into the property and vice versa, so we can understand what that screening would look like when installed and maybe three to five years in.
Okay.
And that rendering should be brought, brought back here so the public can see.
Okay.
All right. The gentleman, oh.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Alex Cruz. I've been a resident for fourteen years here and I moved up from the city. That's why I moved up here. See all that nasty garbage and disgusting crime that happens in cities. This is going to cause problems. These mountains are going to cause problems just like the city. This is going to bring all the young yuppies, they're going to bring all these drugs, parties. Young kids are going to bring the cars, drive it to Fifty-two, Payton, problems. Trust me, this is going to be a problem. The young guys and the police department, which, I'm retired from it, I'm not a civil department. That, this is going to be a nightmare. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. Rich Priscilla, twenty-five Round Hill Road. In an effort not to be redundant, I agree with a lot of things that were said. In the landscaping plans, I noticed the trees, minimum six to eight feet. If we can do something about that to raise that, I know you're going to relook at the landscaping plan, I'd appreciate that. I have a letter. Most of the points have been covered. I'd like to submit it to add to the minutes, please. That's okay?
Thank you.
What guarantee can the town make that this will not turn into section eight housing? Is there something that can be done? And then finally, if we can do something about that bus stop from coming onto Round Hill Road, if we can push for it to be on Palin or Fifty-two, I think that'd be a bit more acceptable to the community. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, wait, wait. Amy, on the, if you can come up. On the guarantee to, as far as section eight, Tom, is that?
We can ask if they can do that and they can respond to us.
So, from a section eight perspective, can, can you, I guess I'd say from a criteria perspective, be able to ensure we don't have section eight individuals?
I'm going to defer back to Tom. What's the legality in that? Like, how?
I'm not the developer's attorney.
Okay, so, yeah, we can, we'll look into it.
And we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And then a bus, bus stop on, back to the, work with the school district on the, the bus stop. Coming into the community, the community does not want it looping to pick up kids from the development. So, bring that back, back to them and say, you know, this is, this is not what the community is, you know, agreeing to. And, and so, and get their response and we'll bring it back to the, you know, so, full disclosure.
Okay.
Amy, can I ask another question that you could bring back to the applicant? We've had a couple of folks talk about, they would feel differently about this project if it were condos instead of apartment ownership. Can, can we see what the appetite is for the applicant?
Yes.
I know that's a very different process, but I think it's worth exploring.
Okay.
Okay. In the, in the back, gentleman in the back.
Michael Leonardo, sixty-eight Round Hill Road. Again, like my resident said, not to be redundant, I'm going to touch on every topic that was touched. I'm going to, she talks a lot about industry standards and stuff like that. I got twenty years in the construction business. I don't know how many of you have been involved in that. Industry standards, inspection on Friday, all right, everybody? Inspection is on Friday. Let's clean the crap out of the construction site, make it look pretty for the walkthrough. What happens Monday through Thursday? Silt fence around the whole property. Looks beautiful. Ninety percent of that silt fence will not be properly installed, I can guarantee it. Bus stop, eight to thirteen kids. We joke in the neighborhood all the time that we don't have, next year, we won't have enough. We'll have too many kids for one bus. Impossible. They can have five more kids coming from that apartment. Impossible. They can have five more kids coming from that apartment complex. They're gonna need a second bus. They said the bus stop is there. Yeah, the bus stop is there. They informed the school district that there'll be an additional thirteen, more like thirty. If they did a study in our neighborhood, standards would probably say eight school-aged children. There's thirty. Okay, thirty. I just, I don't understand an apartment complex in Hopeville Junction. If you... Our community is here because we live there. If you took a vote of the residents in all of Hopeville Junction, I can guarantee you overwhelmingly, they would vote down on the apartment complex in Hopeville Junction. Do not, do not be the board that let them get the foot in the door and it's be the first of many to come. Thank you.
Do we have someone else from the public?
Hello, my name's Patrick. I live at thirty Round Hill Road. From our house, we could see directly into that lot. We could see into John Jay, actually, from our house. So when you do come out to look at the environmental survey, please come to our house. It's the only time I'll be inviting the town over to my house. So please come over then and look from my bedroom window where you can see into every one of these apartments. Take that into account when you're redoing the trees. They need to be thirty-foot trees at least. Speaking of that, these trees get planted. That's all well and good. It passes the code. A storm comes and they fall down. Is there gonna be a law somewhere written where they have to get replaced? How many trees have fallen down recently? So, please have it written, if we can, that these need to get replaced. Because they won't replace them because it's a big cost. I'm gonna go all the way back to the beginning of this about the traffic study. Was this traffic study done for a town like Beacon where people walk? There is no walking anywhere from this apartment complex. You have to drive everywhere. There's no sidewalk to John Jay. Even if there was, all you could get to is John Jay, a pizza place, a small deli. That's about it. Eighteen people leaving? Seriously? A hundred people are gonna be living there and only eighteen leaving during the high-traffic hours? Be realistic, please. Make them do better. You're here for us. Please make them do better and show realistic stats. We all know there's not gonna be eighteen people coming and going during high-traffic hours. There's gonna be well over that. Exiting left onto Palin. Ridiculously dangerous. You have to cross three lanes, two of which are straight through to I Park, which hopefully gets busier. Some of us hope it does, some of it doesn't, but it's going to get busier. People are going to be trying to make that light, and two of those lanes are straight through. You're gonna be doing forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five miles an hour to make that light. And now you're gonna have this apartment complex making a left across three lanes to get into their lane. That is ridiculously dangerous. Somebody's gonna pull out in front of me when I'm on my motorcycle because they don't see me, and I'm gonna end up dead because we let them turn left on three lanes. What else? Parking on cul-de-sac. Is there a way? The town can make it. So there is no parking allowed on that cul-de-sac. So it is a ticketable offense, a towable offense. So there's... I know my neighbors down at the end, they see people parking there all the time, and it's not for good stuff. People are parking there already making drug deals, probably. How much more is gonna increase? It needs to be a ticketable offense, a no-parking zone, a tow-away zone, something where we can call the cops, and the cops will come and tow the car or something because there will be people parking there, and they shouldn't be in our neighborhood for their development.
You're saying that's happening right now?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've... Call the police?
We have, sir. We've called them many a times, sir. And with now a hundred new residents, and we don't know what they're gonna be like. Hopefully, everybody hopes that they're outstanding citizens, as best citizens there are. But we know it's not gonna be true. We know there's gonna be some bad apples. With a hundred people living there, you know crime's gonna go up. You know there's gonna be more offenses. Is any policing added? Will the patrol route go through our neighborhood now? Go through their development? Because as it is, we've called them, we've had cars stolen out of a driveway. Yeah, we've had cars stolen out of driveways. We've had cars broken into. It's only gonna get worse. I think I have one more thing. No, I think that's it. I'm sure Mr. Prusita already has a lot of information in his packet. I really hope a lot of our stuff gets heard and that you guys are doing what's right for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I also have one.
Okay, give it to Jack. She's right, yeah.
Are my questions gonna be answered about trees being replanted, sir?
So, yeah, if it's on a site plan, I believe it has to be replanted, right? I think that's on the books.
You think they're...
No, I'm pretty sure I'm...
No, well, sorry, that angle you had, Tom was confirming that.
Yeah, under our site plan law, if it's a requirement of the site plan, it's damaged, removed, they have to replace it, or there's a penalty provision.
What's your time?
Well, it's... State law is thirty days.
And is the penalty a one-time penalty, or are they...
No, it's progressive.
Okay.
The more times you do it, the more expensive it gets.
And you're replacing the exact type of tree?
Correct.
So, like, one year, they'll replace trees the same?
Pardon me?
In twenty years, there's no guarantee of replacement?
Yes. That's forever. It's different than a residential property, a commercial property.
They've got on IBM properties, pine trees, they're not replacing those?
Well, it may not, that might not have been required on the site plan. Sorry, I would have to go look at the site.
It's required on the site plan.
Okay. The site plan is what's before the board tonight.
So just, I don't wanna have a misperception, though, Tom. So if we require, I don't know, eight-inch-sized trees, and that tree has grown to twenty inches...
Well, no, I mean that...
An eight-inch-sized tree is what would be required to replace it. So just as far as that goes, if something does fail at the site, the replacement is whatever was required at the outset of the site plan. I don't wanna have a misperception.
Right. Hey, can the town do something about that for us, then? Can we somehow change that? On, I... To replace something that...
Realistically, I think depending on the size of a tree, it's not always... You wouldn't be able to replace an eighty-year-old tree with an eighty-year-old tree. But I think we can, what we can do, and what we've asked the applicant...
Comparable, yes, comparable.
What we can do, what we've asked the applicant to do...
There won't be other pillow shrub. Be comparable.
Just a second. We've asked the applicant to provide for us a visual rendering of what the landscaping would look like when it's installed and what that would look like day one. And that way you would have a sense of what would happen if something, you know, I don't know, some sort of natural disaster happened and they had to replace it, you would know what it would look like.
Hey, Tom, I just wanna clarify something else. It's currently illegal to park on town roads.
There's no overnight parking on town roads from November first through April fifteenth. So, except if the town board enacts a parking ordinance and puts the signage, then they can further restrict it. So in this case, maybe restrict the cul-de-sac to no parking.
Yeah.
Okay, but otherwise, there's no overnight parking from November first until April fifteenth.
So that should come up before the town board?
Well, that's your recommendation.
Venue for that to be...
Amy, I know the board has also expressed to you the concern about the left-hand turn out of Palin. Is there a way to potentially restrict that? I know not perfect, but by signage or something during the peak hours? So there's less chance of somebody crossing three lanes of traffic during the peak hours of traffic?
We can look into it again. It's gonna be the DPW's call ultimately.
Well, that would be signed within your property.
In the site, yeah. We can put signage up.
We also mentioned that of having a divider even on Palin, so to prevent that. So that would be another thing for, we'd like to know as well.
On Palin?
So, yeah, so you're not making that left into...
We have a channel, like, we're showing a channelized curbing.
Yeah.
Sir, the issue is making left onto Palin, out of their development, onto Palin.
Yes, oh, so we talked about the curbing would prevent that as well.
So the curb will prevent the vehicle from turning from Palin and left into the property, but we are allowing a left turn from the property onto Palin?
Which is ridiculous and dangerous.
And so what I'm suggesting is during peak hours of traffic, we could restrict that left-hand turn.
Well, they can apply to the county for that restriction. It's a county rule.
Without being assigned within their own site, why would that...
True, but any signage or control within a hundred feet of the intersections are regulated by the various, the DOT for Fifty-two and the county for the other roads.
So they would have to... We have to look at the verification of that, too, because, you know, if you went to go eastbound or into the village, if you restricted that movement, then it means they would have to take a right turn. A right turn, the only out movement would be a right turn out, which then, you know, they would have to go down to Fifty-two, go to the...
And it would change the traffic pattern.
It would change the traffic pattern. They'd have to look at that a bit.
But it would protect my life. It would help save my life possibly, sir. That's what we're getting at.
No, I understand. And I think we'll have them look at that.
We'll get more information.
Okay.
The traffic study, that wasn't answered yet, was that done for a area like Beacon? Or was that done for a rural area like Rossford, apartment buildings?
The traffic projections are, again, like I said, it's based on studies of existing uses of apartments. This is... The publication also does give criteria for different areas of where the uses are conducted. They have a mixed-use urban area, then they have a city core. Those were not used in this. It was more the suburban aspect of things. And as far as the numbers, those are what are anticipated at these ones based on those existing counts of those other facilities. So no one leaves... Maybe not everyone leaves the same peak hour, you know, maybe you leave an hour later or, you know, maybe not during that certain time. That's where you get the adjustment. But that is based on actual counts, so it is realistic.
Do we have anyone else from the public that... Come on.
How you doing? My name is Robert Malone. I live at sixteen Round Hill Road, right next door to the wonderful proposed apartments going up. Just to rewind, when we were looking at purchasing and building our home, one of the questions that I asked the realtor and the builder at the time was what was gonna go next door? And I was, not only was I told that it was gonna be for commercial use, that it was gonna be a bank or a doctor's office or professional offices, I was also told that the height would not exceed the height of our homes and the building material of the structure would match the building material used for the homes in development. Not only has that changed, but it's a complete three-sixty. It takes years to get architectural plans approved and designed. Was the intentions all along to have this built? And it was just waiting for the homes to finish getting built and developed? Because clearly, I mean, this isn't something that was decided in, you know, a twenty-four-month period. It took a lot of time and planning to get something like this up and running. So that's just my... Why was everything drastically changed so much? And everything that was, I was told was in the deed for the approved piece of property? Yeah, everything was thrown out the window. And so I was just looking for some color on that.
Did you ever ask the developer? That question?
I heard that at the town board, actually. The town board. A bunch of materials on the outside of the building to match the materials of the houses?
Yes, that was.
At the town board. That's right.
That was. They said, actually...
You can raise your hands who was there, the witness.
And I can tell you, because I borrowed the question, and I was told that to expect the structure to look like the bagel shop and floral shop in Popewell, that it was going to look very similar to that.
And this is when it was proposed as commercial?
Correct.
Sir?
Correct.
So that's what we were told, what we were getting.
When the approval was before the town for the commercial, that certainly was a factor in it. But a property owner, until they build what they got the approval for, has the right to come back in and petition for any other use under the law. And this is the third, I think, proposal this developer has brought in on this property and gone through a process. So I think, sir, what you're talking about is, and we get this quite often when people buy a home and it's on a cul-de-sac and there's two hundred acres of farmland at the end of the cul-de-sac, unless the developer gives you a restriction in your deed or an agreement in your deed or puts a restriction on the deed for that other property, you have no control over what is allowed on the adjoining property within the zoning ordinances that exist. So if that was a major concern when you were purchasing it, had they given you that in writing in your deed, that would be an enforceable right that you would have. So I don't know what your deed says or what the title is. But those are because quite often this board hears from residents, well, when I bought my home, the real estate broker told me it's a cul-de-sac street. It's always gonna be a cul-de-sac. But the owner of the property at the end of the cul-de-sac one day came in and decided to subdivide his or her property, and the cul-de-sac becomes a through road, so...
So the zoning was changed from commercial to multifamily residential?
The zoning on this site has been changed over the years.
Now, so can I request the zoning for my home to be changed to multifamily?
You have a petition to board, town board, for that, sure. And you would go through a process? Any rezoning is before the town board. They held a public hearing. They take comment. They take a vote.
I wasn't aware that you can do that. So the other concern is, is that this project is going to completely take away any privacy that I currently have in my backyard. Also, the balconies, the way that they are situated, they're gonna be looking directly into my kids' bedrooms. It's just disappointing that none of that was taken into consideration.
Well, but that's what your comments now are gonna have to be addressed. You know, that the location of the balconies and the windows in the direction, that they were gonna have to come back and show the board what they can do to perhaps address that comment.
Right, but I mean, none of this was thought of when the approvals were being granted?
Well, this is the...
There's no approvals, excuse me?
There's no approval been given yet for this.
That's why you're here.
Okay.
So up until now, the applicant's been showing us their plans, their drawings. We've been asking questions. But is this feedback that we need now, you know, so they've taken as far as they can go, it says now it needs to come in front of the residents, and so we can hear what their thoughts are. And that's, this is why this is so important.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have to do some questions. I know...
Can you come up to the mic? Thank you.
So Natalie Jean, Nine Coopers. I know when we purchased our home, the lot that we purchased was just a standard. I think it was a little over two and a half acres or so. As well as the gentleman across the street, I saw him leave, but Eddie and his mom purchased the home across the street, same thing, one lot. Shortly after we had moved in and we, you know, developed the property, the builder came to us and alerted us to the fact that he was in a little financial distress and was short on cash. And he was going to be taking the two lots that were on Palin that were, you know, butting up against our properties, ours as well as Eddie's, and they were going to be zoned commercial. He then, at that point, gave us an opportunity to purchase the property, to purchase the land. We were fortunate enough that we were able to do that, and the same thing with Eddie and his mother. So no one will ever, as long as we own those properties, will ever be able to put any type of commercial type or residential to, at least on our end. be able to put any type of commercial type or residential to, at least on our end, I can't speak for Eddie. My question is, those properties at the end of Round Hill originally were supposed to be residential, when they were finding that they were having difficulty moving them, at least this is how it was portrayed to the homeowners, then they said they were going to zone them commercial and to develop them. Were they ever put up or said to any of the people who lived adjacent or in the development, hey, would any of you people like to purchase this property for X amount of dollars or X amount of, because we were given a really great deal, I won't disclose, but we were given a really great deal for that piece of property. I don't know if that offer was ever extended.
I don't.
No?
No idea.
I don't know.
That wouldn't be something that would be the review of the town?
No, of the, of the board, so we, we wouldn't, but...
Or the town?
No.
Or the town, it's not the review of the town, but what it...
So, my question now...
That's a private property, right, if somebody wants to sell their property or change it, they can offer it to other people, but that's a private...
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is that it was brought to our attention, not, if it were just, you know, Henry and I, I could say, okay, maybe because we became friendly with the builder, or the realtor, or whatever, but it was also offered to the neighbor across the street as well. So, again, I, I have to ask, why wasn't that extended, or at least brought up, because perhaps there were some other people in...
But that's a question, we'd have to be whoever owned the lots at that time, or if it's this owner, you would have to ask them.
That's a question for the property owner.
Approach them and try to buy it.
I'm sorry?
Approach them and try to buy it. That's what you're asking.
We just protest the bagel shop.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait, this gentleman with the red, and, all the way in the back, you wanted to, no?
I'm sorry, I spoke before, I just have one question, as you can see, the, you know, the community around Hill are very close-knit, passionate about the project, and some projects down in the city, especially when they're closer to residential communities, they sometimes do a community board, that walk through with the inspectors, you know, once a week, once a month, however you call it, to address some of the issues that might come up during construction, as far as did silt fence, runoff, decibel levels, which are gonna be an issue. I can tell you, there was a house built on Round Hill, four houses for mine, I worked nights, and this is a small hammer going, and they're gonna hit rock, it's Stone Ridge for a reason, they're gonna hit a lot of rock with bigger machines, so the decibel levels, they're gonna be pushing the limits when it hits to the residential line, and I'm just wondering if that's something that could be considered, a member of the community that lives in that community with legitimate concerns, to nip things in the butt, so you don't wait a whole month process, going through for a stop order, something that can maybe be addressed before a stop order is issued, might be beneficial to both parties. Thank you.
So, Amy, can you come up on? Just, just make a note, so the community can be a part of the, doing the construction aspect of it and give feedback?
I'm sorry?
Maybe, well, maybe...
Yeah, you can see, you can see what proposal the developer wants to do, and on our side, the planning board may wanna consider actually having a noise monitor at various times that actually take readings at different times, or complaints, it's...
Right, but that would, that would be something that the town or the...
Well, yeah, but the town would, would look to the developer, obviously, to pay for that, and would also be looking for any other opportunity the developer willing to cooperate, if there was approval of some sort of a community input.
That sounded like a community, to me, a community board would be, you know, people who are...
Well, we all have different versions, but let's just face facts here, part of the town, of the planning board's role is under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so it's the role of the board to attempt to mitigate impacts, so if the community is now identifying a potential impact, the other gentleman said about the visual impact into his child's windows, that's an impact that, if it can be mitigated, should be mitigated. Now we're hearing maybe the concern of noise or rock, so hours of limitation, maybe there can't be any hammering, maybe it has to be blasting, I don't know, but I'm just saying that these are things that the board could impose as conditions if the project was gonna go forward, so I think you have to evaluate them, I think that's what you need the chairman asking you to do.
Understood.
I guess the question is, is a more streamlined approach for grievances that happened during construction that need addressed?
Right, right, it's a good idea, it's a good point.
Yeah.
About the project?
Okay. All right, Amy, Amy, let me take the...
Say.
Come up.
I think you're running out of space here. Kyle Ramkassun, I live at sixty-two Round Hill Road, I just have a question about the lighting.
Are you, are you name?
Kyle.
Your name?
Kyle Ramkassun, sixty-two Round Hill Road, I just have a question about the lighting that's gonna come off this project, and what's being done to mitigate the light pollution?
Are you a lighting expert?
Yeah, I can just talk a little bit, so there is, there was a lighting plan submitted as part of the application, and the lighting fixtures, the lighting levels were actually pretty low, but the fixtures are, are full cutoff fixtures, so they're supposed to not spill light over to, up into the sky or to the side, and we can make sure that all the fixtures that are near any property lines will be shielded to the rear, so the light is really stopped at that location. They have pretty good technology now that allows you to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll make a note of this, make sure...
The other question, I have a question, a gentleman came up here, a young man, and he was talking about the benefits that it's gonna bring us, do you guys have anything, or do they, what are the benefits to do this project for the community, or for the people who live right next to it, like I do, and the people behind me? That's what I'd like to know, where are the benefits? You guys have any ideas of the benefits will be, such as tax revenue?
So, create jobs during the construction process, which will...
That's a short paper.
All right, so, so, wait, let her, give her answer, okay, I think we, go ahead.
It will create jobs, it will provide housing for people who can't necessarily afford to buy a house, but are maybe commuters, or starting out, and they want a nice respectable place to live, and it gives them the opportunity to stay within the town and stay resident here.
So, is there, so, come on, so, my question for you is, are, is there any plans to look at those that already live within the community as, for renting first, or any, you know?
You mean give them first refusal for rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't, that's discrimination. You can't, you really can't do that, you can't, if you live in a town, you get first choice.
Well, so, I'll be very honest with you, what the benefits are, New York State, New York State, since the nineteen-seventies...
What are the benefits for the residents?
I'm gonna explain it to you, sir, if you give me two minutes.
Sorry, I'm yours.
Sir?
In order to protect the integrity of the town zoning ordinance, the town has to have, within that ordinance, a variety of rental, of housing opportunities, we can't just be single-family homes, as much as, you know, the bulk of the population would like, because we were sued several years ago, because we did not allow any workforce or affordable housing in the town, we resolved that lawsuit by creating a workforce housing development in the town, and by agreeing to make sure our zoning ordinance was all-inclusive, like it or not, that's the law in New York State, and in towns, if you look in Westchester, what happened in Westchester, they had the massive lawsuit with the federal government, they were forced to create thousands of units of housing, once, against community opposition, because the zoning ordinances of those towns were being declared unconstitutional. So if we sit here tonight and say, no rental apartments anywhere in East Fishkill, you know, we're gonna be in a situation where our entire zoning ordinance will be thrown in. So, that's a legal benefit.
No, no, the question is, what's the benefit that the developer's gonna give us?
Our park is perfect for apartments.
But now you...
There's an apartment in a residential...
Route fifty-two is, Route fifty-two is a commercial corridor in the town.
Where's there a parking on Route fifty-two, sir?
Parking?
Where's there a parking at Hopewell Junction?
On Route three-seventy-six, the state highway? Okay, Route, well, that's, that even proves my point more, Route fifty-two, there aren't any. Are they?
So do I have to go through a neighborhood in that area, three-seventy-six, I know exactly where it is, to get to another neighborhood, or is that one separate complex?
That's a separate complex.
You can't go through your neighborhood to get to this apartment, they're not going to ungate Round Hill Road.
No, but they can go, or walk, or bus stop.
You're right, we can't get to them, they can get to us.
And you're saying that you have to do this apartment, and then...
Hold up, hold up, sir, sir.
So you have to lie into it again?
My is lying to you, I mean, that, let's be clear here, we're trying to get the right answers from, from Amy, we're gonna document it, you know, and everything's been laid out, so she has things that she has to come back to, it may be to our satisfaction, it may, may be to your satisfaction, or it may not be, but, but we have to, we have to communicate and let her, you know, answer the question, she, she gave her, she gave, she gave, wait, wait, she gave her two answers, she said commuters, and create construction jobs, okay? So, so, that may not be, that may not be a benefit that's meaningful.
But a benefit of the owner, have you heard from a real landlord, they'll take anything that's not empty, so there your section eight goes out the window, so you're gonna have a ghetto, or a slum there, those are slum boards.
And frankly, sir, I can't believe everything she said, everything happened to students in heaven, they didn't even talk about students, and she turned it and twisted it, it was about traffic, so I don't believe anything she has to say from this point on, to be honest, it was early in on the year.
I didn't twist any...
Thank you for your comment, why don't you step down, Amy?
I have one last question, I'm building, I've had it long, but I have one last question, who decides if it's gonna be condos or rentals?
That's property owner's privilege in New York State, the property owner decides.
The property owner.
Correct.
The builder.
Correct, in New York State, they have the option, it can be built as an apartment, and then it can be converted to a condo, and many of them are, so, or it could go to a co-op, that's a developer's priority.
Because I think a lot of people here would feel a lot better...
I hear that, yeah.
We've asked the applicant to explore that option and come back to us.
That, we've asked them to consider that. They would feel a lot better if the people owned the property.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, thank you for your...
Craig, can we just talk about next steps, like what is gonna happen after this meeting, what's gonna take place, how these questions are...
Well, I gotta first see if there's, any, any other comments from the public, come on up, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, raise your hand.
I, I wanted, Patrick, thirty Round Hill, I want, ask quickly, you said something about workforce apartment, or workforce housing?
Correct.
Is there a, a, a limit to what you would consider a proper rental price for workforce housing, will this fifteen hundred dollars a month that they're proposing fall into the workforce housing?
No.
So, you're not even, your benefit, sir, isn't even helping us, right?
No, it is, because...
No, sir, sir, no, sir, can I, can I, can I please finish, sir? You're saying that we would provide more workforce housing, but the fifteen hundred dollars a month in rent doesn't fall into that limit of workforce housing, therefore we're not providing more workforce housing?
No, that's not what I said, I said we have to have a variety of housing opportunities in the town, ownership, rental, and workforce. The workforce is based on, we hear a lot about studies, every area in planning is based on studies, Rutgers University did a study, they said this region needs X number of units of workforce housing, the town board enacted an ordinance that, at the time was enacted, said we needed approximately a hundred and ten units, the development that was approved fulfilled almost ninety of that, so, that's the one segment of it, but it's a variety of housing, so these, these fulfill a variety of housing in that these are rentals and not ownership.
But, sir, don't sell it as, our town needs workforce housing then, like you did, I know you said it, I know you said our town needs a variety, but you sold it as, we're short on workforce housing, this is gonna help us.
We were, we corrected that.
He used as, as an example of why that thing across the, the, across the street from the town hall was built, that's why it was built, for whatever reason.
I have two questions, if this gets approved, which none of us here want approved, is this gonna be a last minute complex? Do you guys have a plan, or, when works are planned, building something else, also with this?
The, the only other proposal before the town now for multiple family units is on the other end of Palin Road for fifty-five and older rental apartments.
Fifty-five and old?
Fifty-five.
Only?
Yeah, so what in a few discriminatory ways you can discriminate in housing is for an age segment over fifty-five.
Okay, my second, I guess all of a sudden, who has the final approval of this?
The, if, if they satisfy the planning board, and the planning board feels it's in compliance with all the rules and regulations, the planning board makes the decision, seven members of the planning board.
Now, do our, do our residents, us here, have any say in that? Should we vote on this? Yes or no on this?
We both am I will vote this, yes, yes.
Can we vote on this, the residents?
No, New York, New York State doesn't allow project by project to be voted.
That's not, we should be able to vote on this, yes or no? This is our town, and we should be all.
Hey, voting, come on, you just voted all off the board.
There are points.
There are points, they voted for it.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Yes.
My name is Kamel Jamal, I live on eighty-nine Round Hill Road, and I think you're all full of shit.
Any other comments from, from the public?
Craig, I just wanna mention that we did receive a bunch of emails into the planning office, that we will, that have been asked to be placed into record, and we will place them into record, and I can read off the name, I received an email from Michelle LaCallester at thirty-five Palin Road, Hopewell Junction, her email will be placed in record, I don't know, Craig, do you have a couple also?
Yes, I did, so, those have already been processed?
They have.
So, they're in the record.
When we say in the record, is everybody, does everybody have access to the record, know how to get to the record if you want to see it? Can we just maybe go over first, anyone interested in seeing what some of the results are from tonight?
Well, I think first of all, the public hearing will be extended, and we will invite the applicant back to address the concerns that they've heard tonight, and of course, public hearing will be, will set a date, and it will be noticed, and everyone would be encouraged to come back and make comments if you choose, that would be the first.
Thank you.
So, ten years ago, when I was at the town hall, I asked this question, how does the right of one property owner get to impact hundreds? Because it, it upsets me.
Well, right, so, basically, this is why we have this, to ensure that developer or the owner is not infringing on, you know...
But he clearly is.
But, no, 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 but, understand, we're, that's why the, the board is here in place to, to listen and say, look, these are the things that came back, I mean, maybe the developer can't satisfy everything, right? And, and to our satisfaction, which affects outcome of this, whether this moves forward or not, so, I mean, I just try not, you know, as far as the planning board, that's, that's what we're...
I appreciate the position that you guys are in, I sit on the town board myself, school board, so I understand all that stuff, but it's, it really boggles my mind that one person can have that great of a negative impact on so many of us, and while I'd like to believe that you're considering all that, and you've heard purely negative, right, no one here is saying, yes, we want this in our backyard, right? But I just, I, it just really boggles my mind that one person, for fifteen years, because I've lived in our home now twelve years, or longer, has been trying project after project after project, so, when is it enough? When do you guys say, like, okay, this clearly cannot pass here in Hopewell Junction, right? We moved out of Beacon twelve years ago, because I don't wanna live in Beacon, have you been on Main Street in Beacon? Have you been on Main Street in Beacon? I used to live on Central Park, I don't want to live there. We moved here for a reason, everyone here talks about quality of life for a reason. It means something, right? I work in the city, come home, tranquility, peaceful. I have 10 deer that call my front yard their home, a couple foxes, coyotes, that's what I want. I don't wanna look at that, I wanna, I don't wanna make a left, I mean, a right turn onto Palin Road when I come off the train to see that. But it's like, we have to constantly keep coming to you guys to say, hey guys, we don't want this in our backyard. Whether it's a medical arts building that's supposed to look like the houses because he was creating a drop down facade with siding that's light brown and 20-foot spruce trees, whatever he was creating, right? But again, I'm just so annoyed to keep coming to you guys, year after year, or five years out, or 10 years out, to say, no, and then he lays dormant, and then boom, comes back with something else.
That is the right of every property.
The property owner. I understand that, but that's my question.
And the board, just, just to say, the board doesn't ask somebody to apply for something.
No.
We accept the applications before, so when we receive them, we appreciate that you spend the time with us and I hope that you would continue to spend the time with us in the future if needed.
No, so Lori, I, I agree with, I understand that, I appreciate that, because I own properties, I wanna do something by property, I can come to you guys and file the paperwork to build a shed or whatever it is, right? But it's like, every, it's like a hemorrhoid. Every five years or 10, it just flares up and then it's just something else. It's the third iteration of the same property.
Should've we not passed Stone Ridge when it first came in?
I don't know, that's, that's your decision.
Not if we're gonna put this apartment complex at the end of it.
Well, maybe we shouldn't have passed it and then none of you would've been able to live there.
That's why I would've, I would've built in the legends.
Well, maybe we shouldn't have passed that, maybe we should've stopped it then.
Oh, you're right.
Talking about apples and oranges, it's how, it's not, it's not a good point, Mr.
All right, all right, yeah, I, I think you, you made your, your point. Are there any other questions from the public?
I, I just have one quick question, and I, I don't know if you can answer this.
But how much of all of this do you all take into consideration when you cast your vote?
Every single bit of it.
Absolutely, it's 100% genuine, and you can go to bed at night saying, you know what? We had that community and the best interest of those people and their safety and their families and their privacy. We have their best interests, you can honestly say that.
Every bit of it, and there is projects that didn't happen because of it.
Okay.
Or that, or that were significantly changed based on the feedback from our community.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And again, I'm going to say, as I said earlier, I really, really encourage you all to truly take into consideration everything that you've heard today from all of us here. I don't think, as, as was mentioned, there's not one person that's happy about this prospect.
I think you should remain confident that we will.
Well, we're trying. We are trying, and I think that's why we're here, because we are voicing our concern. But I think that because of the history, is that we're starting to become a little uneasy because, as was mentioned, this is now the third or fourth time that we've had to kind of be faced with this. So we're just asking to please really consider and think about everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or, or comments that wanna be made? So Amy, I'm gonna ask you to come up. We have a, a number of items to come back to us. When, I'm gonna make a motion that the public hearing is not closed, stays open, right? So you work, continue to work those items. And I'm going to also ask the public to, there was also a Waltham School District meeting tonight, so people may not have had the opportunity to, to come because of the conflict. So I wanna make sure, I'm gonna extend a written period for 10 days so that we can get that feedback and we'll, we'll pass it back to you so that you can respond, so.
I don't, I don't think there's a limit on the written feedback while the public hearing remains open. So we're okay to accept comment until we actually close the public hearing, which will not be this evening.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And you'll have another opportunity to come back and voice your opinion.
We need to pick a date to adjourn the public hearing.
I think, Michelle, we didn't finish with you describing how residents or townspeople can get to the application record.
Yes, so I know it's a little bit difficult right now because of COVID, but the town hall offices are, are opening, you certainly can call the planning office and make an appointment to come in and see any of the documents that you wish to see. There will be minutes from this meeting, I don't know, I can't promise you exactly when they'll be ready, but they, they do them pretty quickly and I can get you copies of those to be called. And also, I believe it's recorded, so I don't know, it'll be up on, I think YouTube, right? They typically post it on YouTube. So if anyone wants to, if you want, a neighbor was not able to be here tonight and they wanted to see the public hearing, they can search and I can also get you the address, the Hopewell Planning Office. And you can watch the video. Thank you. Oh, so I, I think we need to choose a date to, and I, that depends a little bit on you, Amy, when you can get the answers to, to these questions submitted to us so that we can have a productive meeting. October 20th is the next, is the October meeting.
But she'd need that by?
We need that by the beginning of October, everything's about to be announced.
Okay.
Well, that would be dependent on when we adjourn to, right?
Yeah.
It just needs to be. The next, the October meeting's October 20th.
Yeah, Michelle, would it be, would it be a special meeting?
Yes, definitely.
So then, so then we would not be, so then it would have to be after that probably.
Middle of November? Yeah.
Whenever you think you can get us the information, it's the old November.
I think we should go through the list of outstanding items and things that we're asking for.
I have three pages of outstanding.
To go back through that, if that's all right.
And I, what I can do is I can write up my notes and give them to you.
Okay.
Things that we need you to address, absolutely.
Okay.
I think we should run through it.
I can, I can certainly, I can do a memo with the comments that I read.
Michelle, can you share it with the board members so we can add our notes if they're not gonna go through it right now?
So I'll send it to the board members first and then we'll, we'll start there.
Amy, can, can you just go through what you have? You've documented this question, so we'll make sure we're in sync as much as possible before we adjourn the public hearing.
Yes, there's drainage concerns, sewer and water connection concerns, the school bus not entering Round Hill, or not picking up on Round Hill. Discuss the potential school age children impact with the school.
Sidewalk to John Day High School.
Yep, sidewalk.
Reach out to Waltham and the school district.
Got that.
Repeat the soil test, I park and the traffic study.
Look at the I park traffic study compared to our traffic study, our previous traffic study.
Relocation of the bus stop, the potential relocation of the bus stop.
Got that. Potential bus shelter.
Condos?
I'm getting there.
Property value.
Potential tract revenue.
Construction noise.
Additional screening.
Plan, possible environmental monitor for community member to jar's liaison for the construction.
Potential section eight restriction.
Visitor parking.
On-site manager.
Yeah, land bank parking.
Probably bus stop, making sure the snow removal areas are clear on the plan. Land banked parking, review the landscaping and provide the visuals of what it will look like, pet installation and then three to five years in.
I have most of it, thank you.
Construction phasing plan and timing. That's the screening and landscaping, privacy.
And then the curbing on the turn lanes. She mentioned it.
So we're proposing to adjourn the public hearing to November 17th.
Okay.
The Tuesday night. In this location.
Okay.
Restricting the left side of Palin as.
Curbing and.
The curbing, but also peak hours.
Peak hours, yeah.
So you have to make a motion to adjourn.
Is that agreeable with you?
I. Yes.
Is that a scheduled meeting or is that a?
Yeah, it's a special meeting.
Special meeting, okay. November, what was it, November?
17.
I think we should just say we're gonna attempt to have it here, same place. But if it's not available, we'll put out all kinds of information and let you know that as people summon us. Cause we don't control the calendar.
So at this time, we'll make a motion to keep the, adjourn the public hearing till, to, to, hold on, Jason. We'll make a motion to extend, continue to, keep the public hearing open and re-adjourn on November 17th. All, all in favor?
Aye.
7:00 p.m.
7, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close the meeting for tonight? We moved in probably second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.